I am the Support Services Department Manager for the Division of Economic Development. I should ask you to talk to me about this change. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Captain. Ms. Belinda Shirley.
Yeah, it's been a shame. I don't know. The Nocini Resource Development Committee. Yeah, it's been a I don't. She not a here hat and don't agree on how to be in the. Then he here. Now, two years. How to how to do the know what about when he see. So thank you for your prayer. And then yeah, it been a to everybody. She is a cheat need to know. She go to the land by such cheap. But I need to say to her that she know that. Yeah, it's a here hat on.
Thank you, Ms. Shirley. Ms. Maureen Curly.
Oh, yeah, it been a honorable Chairman Ness. Not only and members of the RDC Committee. Good morning again. Chairman. This is Maureen Curly. I'm sorry. I've got so many things on my desk. I'm trying to decide what to do. But anyway, good morning. She Maureen Curly. She are here on the basis. I can't manage. That is in basis. She have a some last time ago. I'm a guy that she know that. Thank you, Chairman Delegate Walker for that beautiful prayer. Good morning. I hope my scatter brains is, you know, kind of connecting with everything later today. I'm scattered today. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle from Gaming Regulatory.
Yeah, they have been a good morning. Chair Ness and Resource Development Committee. Donation is a she is long. Do touching a basis. She thought this thing that she do. Can you only touch another? I am the executive, acting executive director of the Navajo Nation Gaming Regulatory Office. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Yellman, are you on the call? None. Officer President, Vice President, Mr. Philfred. Terracida Clashon. None. Honorable Key Allen Bagay Junior.
Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, yeah, they uh, yeah, they been at the chairman. Could all. And I need to know can only a that she's up. I need to say to other this cheat need to know. I don't know. I keep a gap. Tell them I can with my name in front of that I could all. Chapter but had a shot. So Chairman, apologies for getting on late, but good morning, everyone.
That was Sheila. Let me go back to Terracida Clashon. Our star six to unmute. None. Let me go to Mr. Manuel Rico. Good morning. Yeah, it been a from Office of Legislative Services. Mr. Rico.
Good morning, Chairman Ness and members of the Resource Development. You got to have been a. She Manuel Rico Junior. And she a totally slow. I could wash his chin. Top on this chain. I could additional. And I'm the director with Legislative Services. I'll be listening in on the meeting, Chairman Ness, and good morning to everyone.
Thank you. I believe that's it. We'll move down to number three. Reviewing and approving the agenda. Mr. Tai, could you read the agenda for us?
Good morning, Chair members of Resource and Development Committee. Your agenda reads as follows. Resource and Development Committee of the 24th Navajo Nation Council. Regular meeting Wednesday, August 3, 2022, 8:00 a.m. Presiding Honorable Ricky Ness, Chairperson. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr., Vice Chairperson. Location via telecommunication. One, call the meeting to order, roll call invocation announcements. Two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. Three, reviewing and approving the agenda. Four, reviewing and approving their journals. July 13, 2022, regular meeting. Five, receiving reports, none, old business, none. Seven, new business. A, legislation 0134-22. An action relating to the Resource and Development Committee. Approving and recommending due to the Budget and Finance Committee. The fiscal year 2023 budget for the Navajo Nation Gaming Regulatory Office. And related matters to be included into the Navajo Nations FY 2023 Comprehensive Budget. Sponsor Honorable Ricky Ness, co-sponsor Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Jr. B, legislation 0135-22. An action relating to the Resource and Development Committee. Approving and recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee. The fiscal year 2023 budget for the Division of Economic Development and related matters. To be included in the Navajo Nations FY 2023 Comprehensive Budget. Sponsor Honorable Ricky Ness, co-sponsor Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Jr. C, legislation number 0127-22. An action relating to the Resource and Development Committee. Approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee. The fiscal year 2023 budget for the Navajo Division of Transportation and Related Matters. To be included in the Navajo Nations FY 2023 Comprehensive Budget. Sponsor Honorable Ricky Ness, co-sponsors. Honorable Mark A. Freeland and Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Jr. D, legislation number 0128-22. An action relating to the Resource and Development Committee. Approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee. The fiscal year 2023 budget for the Navajo Environmental Protection Agency. And related matters to be included in the Navajo Nations FY 2023 Comprehensive Budget. Sponsor Honorable Ricky Ness, co-sponsor Honorable Mark A. Freeland. And Wilson C. Stewart, Jr. E, legislation number 0119-22. An action relating to the Resource and Development Committee. Approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee. The fiscal year. 2023 budget for the Division of Community Development and Related Matters. To be included into the Navajo Nations FY 2023 Comprehensive Budget. Sponsor Honorable Ricky Ness, co-sponsor Honorable Mark A. Freeland. And Wilson C. Stewart, Jr. F, legislation number 0126-22. An action relating to the Resource and Development Committee. Approving and recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee. The fiscal year 2023 budget for the Division of Natural Resources and Related Matters. To be included in the Navajo Nations FY 2023 Comprehensive Budget. Sponsor Honorable Ricky Ness, co-sponsors Honorable Mark A. Freeland and Wilson C. Stewart, Jr. G, legislation number 0110-22. An act relating to the Budget and Finance, Resource and Development, and Navike Committees. The Navajo Nation Council. Allocating $5 million from the System Fund. For the assessment and renovation of the former Navajo Forest Product Industry located in Navajo, New Mexico. Approving of the related expenditure plan pursuant to 12 NNC. Section 2501 through section 52508. Sponsor Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Jr. H, legislation number 0114-22. An action relating to the Resource and Development. Approving of the fiscal year 2023 Navajo Nation Housing Plan. For the Native American Housing Assistant and Self-Determination Act of 1996. Indian Housing Block Grant Funding. Sponsor Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. Co-sponsor Honorable Key Allen Bagay, Jr. I, legislation number 0115-22. An act relating to the Resource and Development and Budget and Finance Committee. Approving a change to CAP-35-18 for the Indian Wells Chapter by moving funds. From the senior center facility repairs. In the amount of $265,000 from funding year one to to year three. Sponsor Honorable Elmer P. Bagay. J, legislation number 0117-22. An action relating to the Resource and Development Committee and Navike Committee. Supporting the U.S. Senate Bill 22565. The Native American Housing Assistant and Self-Determination Act of 2021. Urging the U.S. Senate to amend the bill to spend income eligibility requirements to increase Native American home ownership. Sponsor Honorable Mark A. Freeland, co-sponsor Honorable Carl Slater, Edison, and Jay Wanika. Otto So, Paul Bagay, Purnell Holono, Raymond Smith, Jr. Vince R. James, and Wilson C. Stewart, Jr. Eight, a closing meeting announcements and a German. Chair members of RDC, that is the proposed agenda right into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahie, for reading the agenda for us. Appreciate that. Honorable members of RDC, let's establish a motion and a second. Chairman, no motion, Freeland. Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Second.
Chairman, I'll second that.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Any comments or questions? If I'm not. If I'm not, I sent out an email to have a report by Parks and Rec. Over the situation over at Four Corners Monument near Tishna's. Just for your information, we. Would like to have that request honored, but we can do it next Wednesday. So, Mr. Tahie, if you would put it on the agenda for next Wednesday. And have Parks and Rec, Mr. Bagay, provide that an update report on the 20 vendors that were suspended. Thank you. Honorable members of RDC. We're on the main motion. Any comments or questions? I hear none. We'll go ahead and put it to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote? I vote green. Thank you. Honorable Bagay.
Chairman, Kayle, what's green?
Thank you. Honorable Daniels.
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland.
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart.
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries. We have an approved agenda before us. As is. We'll go down to number four, reviewing and approving journals. Ms. Chi sent this to us this morning at 8:11. This is from July 11, 2022. Honorable members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second.
I'm motion, Freeland.
Second, Stewart.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Any comments or questions? I hear none. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Bagay.
Uh, Kevin, Kayla, what's green?
Thank you. Honorable Daniels.
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland.
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart.
Green, Chairman.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries on the journals. Number five, receiving reports, none, old business, none. We're down to new business. And I think the first legislation will be 0134-22. Um, Honorable Stewart, since you're the co-sponsor, are you okay with? Representing this legislation?
Yes, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Cecilia. We do have on the call with us from Gaming. So at this time. Mr. Tahie, could you read this into the record?
Good morning, Chairman. Sorry about that. I had my computer on mute. You have legislation number 0134-22, date July 19, 2022. An act relating to the Resource and Development Committee. Approving and recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee. The fiscal year 2023 budget for the Navajo Nation Gaming Regulatory Office and related matters. To be included in the Navajo Nations FY 2023 Comprehensive Budget. Purpose of this legislation to prove and recommend to the Budget and Finance. The proposed FY 2023 budget for the Gaming Regulatory Office. Chair members of RDC Resource and Development Committee has final authority over this legislation. On the sponsor for this primary legislation is Honorable Ricky Ness, a tracking number. 0134-22. An action relating to the Resource and Development Committee. Approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee. The fiscal year 2023 budget for the Navajo Nation Gaming Regulatory Office and related matters. To be included in the Navajo Nations FY 2023 Comprehensive Budget. Being enacted, section one, authority. The Resource and Development Committee is a standing committee of the Navajo Nation Council with oversight authority over the Navajo Nation Gaming Regulatory Office. Two, NNC section 500A. Two, NNC section 501C1. B, each oversight committee, including the resource. RDC shall review and make recommendations regarding the programs and entities under its oversight responsibility regarding the Navajo Nations Comprehensive Budget for the upcoming fiscal year. 12, NNC section 840A. Section two findings. A, in accordance with 12 NNC section 840A. The RDC held public hearings took relevant testimony regarding the FY 2023 budget for the GRO. B, during these budget meetings, the RDC reviewed and considered the FY 2023 budget for the. GRO and proposed by the Office of the President, Vice President. And as a commitment upon members of the public. Section three, approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee. The fiscal year 2023 budget for the Navajo Nation Gaming Regulatory Office and related matters. The Resource and Development Committee hereby approves the FY 2023 budget for the Navajo Nation Gaming Regulatory Office as detailed in the funded type budget summary. Attached here to as exhibit A. B, the GRO has provided a copy of the controller's recommended FY 2023 budget amount for the GRO based on the projected FY 2023 revenue. Exhibit A1. C, the GRO has provided complete budget forms. One, two, and four, exhibit A2. D. The RDC hereby approves certain provisions of the proposed FY 2023 budget amount for the GRO as shown in columns D and E in the General Funds Comparative Summary. Ta- attached here to as exhibit B. C, the RDC recommends that certain types of. Certain changes to the general fund budget described in the attached exhibit C. D, the RDC recommends that certain conditions of appropriation legislative concerns as listed in the attached exhibit D. E, the RDC recommends that that certain unmet needs for the GRO be included in the FY 2023 Comprehensive Budget as explained in attached exhibit E. F, the RDC hereby recommends that the Budget and Finance Committee approve GRO's FY 2023 budget and all committees, all committee recommendation as set forth in exhibit A through E. G, as necessary and appropriate, the RDC hereby authorize the RDC Chair and Vice Chair to negotiate the RDC recommendation here within within the Budget Finance Committee. Section four, effective date. This act shall become effective as provided in two, NNC. Section 189A. Five, saving clause. If any portion of this action is determined invalid by the Navajo Nation Supreme Court or a district court of the Navajo Nation without appeal to the Navajo Nation Supreme Court, the remainder of this act shall be the law of the Navajo Nation. Chair members of RDC, you have attachment exhibit A, which is the Navajo Nation Fund Type Budget Summary for fiscal year FY 2023. You have exhibit A1, what is the enterprise fund, internal revenue, sir, internal service funds, proprietary funds, revenue projected for FY 2023. You have exhibit A2, which is the Navajo Nation Program Budget Summary. Attaches exhibit B, the Navajo Nation General Fund Comparative Summary. For fiscal year FY 2023. You have exhibit C, the Navajo Nation recommended change to the general fund for fiscal year FY 2023. Attaching of exhibit D, the Navajo Nation recommended that conditions of appropriation legislative concerns for FY 2023. Then you have exhibit E. The Navajo Nation recommended unmet needs budget for fiscal year 2023. Then you have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for legislation number 0134-22. Sponsors Honorable Ricky Ness. This legislation was posted on July 20, 2022, 11:58 p.m. The five-day comment period ended July 25, 2022. There was no comment supporting this legislation. There was no comments opposing this legislation. There was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of RDC, that is legislation number 0134-22, right into the record. Back to Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahie, for reading that into the record. Honorable members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second. Motion. None, Tahie.
Chairman, I motion.
Thank you, Vice Chair Walker. Second.
Daniel here, second.
Honorable Daniels, thank you. I don't. Honorable Stewart, you have 20 minutes with Michelle. Uh, Michelle, how many folks do you have from Gaming?
Good morning, Chair Ness. I have Cheryl Walker, Evan Lee, and Jocelyn Woody.
Did they all take the oath?
Uh, Ms. Woody and Mr. Lee did. Cheryl Walker did not.
Okay. They. Are you gonna have her participate?
No, I will not, since she did not take the oath.
Thank you. But you did as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Honorable Stewart, you have 20 minutes.
Okay, Chairman. Again, good morning. Shana, though, she's a vice chair. All the Shanae. As stated, this is for gaming and legislation for budget renewal. Of course, a I will turn the floor over to Michelle and the staff that have taken the oath to present the budget that they have from gaming. Michelle.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Delegate Stewart. Um, the budget we have here is a revenue account budget from our man, our fund management plan. We collect licensing, gaming licenses, licensing fees and deposit it into this account. Uh, what this account does is that it pays for all our fees that we pay.
Uh, Michelle, Michelle, could you hold one moment, please? Um, just just hold one moment. Honorable Bagay.
Uh, Chairman. Uh, Chairman, good morning. My point of order, point of order, Kado. Um, I believe this is not a hearing of the budget. Uh, we're in a regular meeting and and this is the legislation that we're dealing with now. And I believe we're back into the the normal, proper process of the presenter identifying who will be his agent. Rather than ask, I mean, rather than asking if any of these individuals had took the oath. I mean, I just think clarification on that one, Chairman, before we proceed.
Um, Honorable Bagay. The the staff from Gaming, Mr. Lee, Mr. Woody, as well as Michelle, took the the oath. And Ms. Walker was a new name, so I was curious whether she was gonna participate in this. And that's why we cannot move forward with staff not taking the oath. They have to take the oath and they have to ask that question as the Chair of RDC, Honorable Bagay. We don't want her to provide some sort of participation to this as well and say and make changes when they, the other three had taken the oath as well. So what what was given to us as far as testimony still stands. And I just needed to make sure. Uh, Ms. Khan, could you make some clarification for us?
Mister Chairman and members of the Resources and Development Committee. This is Navajo Nation Resources and Development Committee, regular meeting. And you have had your hearing in which you read the rules and had a segment in the rules for for swearing, for oath-taking. In this particular setting, we are in a meeting setting. And in a meeting setting, the. Let's see. There is no particular provision for taking an oath. However, it. It is not prohibited from taking an oath before what is essentially a report being given at the meeting. They, it's not usually done. It is up to you, Mister Chair, whether you want to proceed in this manner. It was specifically stated in your rules for the hearing setting. However, this is a meeting setting and at this point, whatever information is given is uh, is like similar to a report, an explanation of the legislation. Um, further explanation of legislation, as you recall, in any meeting setting. No oath is given when Navajo Nation employees are are providing information to the committee with regard to a particular legislation. However, there is nothing that precludes the, um, um. You, Mister Chair, from, um. Requiring the the oath-taking. Right? Unless I find any particular language very quickly, Mister Chair. I, it is up to you, Mister Chair, as a chairman of the committee.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Khan. So it's not prohibited and she can participate. And also, Ms. Khan, one other question would be that we have. What is the limited amount of agents that we can have to speak on each legislation? I remember, I believe it was three.
Uh, we, I will turn to the rules for standing committees. I know at the council level, there is a limitation. Just a second here. On rule 12. Provides. Um, presentation by sponsor. Sponsors shall provide appropriate presentation prior to debate. The sponsors shall make available for each committee member. Okay, there's no, um. There's no number in in the standing rules. Uh, the rules for standing committees with regard to the number of people. I will check one more place. Momentarily, Mister Chair, Mister Chair, rule 13. Momentarily, Mister Chair, Rule thirteen, let me check one more place. Um, I, Rule thirteen, the rules of the standing committees that I have read does not, um, limit the number of, of, uh, agents, Mister Chair, that I can find at this moment. Again, if I, if I, if that, if I come across a limitation, I will let you know right away. Mister Chair, I do not find any limitation.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, go ahead. Uh, Michelle, you may proceed.
Thank you, Chair Ness. So these, this account, it pays for our, all our, our fees that we pay to a certain entity, outside entities and vendors in regarding to background screening, um, background check and also for, um, review, background reviews. Uh, some of the vendors that we pay include the National Indian Gaming Commission, the Arizona Department of Gaming, and an outside contract vendor, um, who does all our, um, other county, uh, state and, uh, local city, uh, background. And then also for our, um, appeals hearing officer through the re amended gaming ordinance. Uh, N N G R O is required to, um, hire an appeals hearing officer to hear all adverse actions, um, taken by my office. And that has been done. We do hire, have a, um, appeals hearing officer who is, uh, a licensed attorney, uh, with Navajo Nation. In addition, we also contract an outside attorney, uh, for, um, the Navajo Nation N N G R O office, uh, who assists my office and the Department of Justice on all, uh, tribal gaming related matters, um, with, uh, the two states, Arizona and New Mexico. So it, it is, um, a, a small amount, but it does help out in, um, paying for all our, our fees. And, um, we do get a, a surplus, um, usually towards the end of the fiscal year, uh, which we factor in and count in, um, and use to pay again for all these fees, um, because of its fluctuation and amount of fees that we pay. Thank you, uh, Delegate Stewart and, uh, Chair Ness. I'm done, Delegate Stewart.
Chairman, that completes the presentation from gaming. Open to questions.
Thank you very much. Honorable Stewart and Michelle. Honorable Members of R D C, we have a motion and a second. Do you have any comments or questions? Any amendments?
Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, Chairman, on page two of three, section three, approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget for the Navajo Nation Gaming Regulatory Office and Related Matters. The lettering is out of sequence. This was pointed out to Ms. Khan. This is can be a technical amendment that they can make internally. So, line fourteen should read as D, line seventeen should read as E, line nineteen should read as F, line twenty one should read as G, line twenty three should read as H, and line twenty five should read as I. Uh, Chairman, if you need further clarification on this, Ms. Khan is on the line to provide that information. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahai. So this could be an internal correction to where staff could just make the corrections without an, um, a motion amendment?
Uh, Chair members of R D C, that is my understanding, but if you would like legal, an opinion, Ms. Khan is on the line regarding this technical amendment on correcting the lettering.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Khan. Your advice.
Mister Chair and members of the Resources and Development Committee, um, Mister Tahai and I have looked at the language and it is, um, um, the, the letters A, B, C, D, E for the paragraphs are, are misnumber, mislettered and it would just take, um, a correction to A, B, C, D, E for that section of the legislation. It is not substantive, um, um, correction that is needed. It is essentially a lettering in order issue and can be taken care of technically without an amendment. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. For the Honorable Members of R D C, do you have any comments or questions? On twice. On three times, we'll go ahead and vote on it. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay.
Chairman, I would screen.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart.
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favors, zero opposed. Chair not voting, motion carries. Thank, thank you, Honorable Stewart. Next, Legislation zero one thirty five dash twenty two. Um, I, I believe Mister J T Willie still on the line. Uh, Honorable Stewart, could you continue to represent this legislation?
Yes, Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Tahai. Could you read this into the record, sir?
Chair members of R D C, you have Legislation Number zero one three five dash two two, date July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty two. Title, the Resolution and Act Relating to the Resource and Development Committee, approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty three budget for the Navajo Nation Division of Economic Development. Purpose, the purpose of this resolution, if passed, is to approve and recommend to the Budget and Finance Committee the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty three budget for the Navajo Division of Economic Development. The primary sponsor on this legislation is Honorable Ricky Nas. Tracking Number zero one three five dash two two. An action relating to the Resource and Development Committee, approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget for the Division of Economic Development and Related Matters to be included in the Navajo Nation's FY twenty twenty three comprehensive budget. The enacted section one, authority. A, the Resource and Development Committee is a standing committee of the Navajo Nation Council with oversight authority over the Division of Economic Development. Two, in N C, section five hundred, A, two in N C, section five oh one, C. B, each oversight committee, including the R D C, shall review and make recommendations regarding the programs under its oversight responsibility regarding the Navajo Nation's comprehensive budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Twelve in N C, section eight forty eight. Section two, findings, in accordance with tw- twelve in N C, section eight forty eight, the R D C held public hearings and took relevant testimony regarding the FY twenty twenty three budget for the D E D. B, during these budget hearings, the R D C reviewed and considered the FY twenty twenty three budget for D E D as proposed by the branch chiefs and as requested by D E D and a comment upon by members of the public. Section three, approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget for the Division of Economic Development and Related Matters. A, the Resource and Development Committee hereby approves the FY twenty twenty three budget for the Division of Economic Development as detailed in the Fund Type Budget Summary. Attach her to as exhibit A. The R D C hereby approves that certain revisions of the branch chief's proposed FY twenty twenty three budget amount for D E D as shown in columns D and E. In the General Fund Comparative Summary, attach her to as exhibit B. C, the R D C recommends the changes to the general fund budget described in exhibit C. D, the R D C recommends certain conditions or appropriation legislative concerns as attached listed in exhibit D. E, the R D C recommends that certain unmet needs for the D E D be included in the FY twenty twenty three comprehensive budget as explained in exhibit E. F, the R D C hereby recommends that the Budget and Finance Committee approves D E D's FY twenty twenty three budget and all co- committee recommendations as set forth in exhibit A through E. G, as necessary and appropriate, the R D C hereby authorize the R D C Chair and Vice Chair to negotiate the R D C's recommendations with, here within, within the Budget Finance Committee. Section four, effective date, this act shall become effective as provided in two in N C, section one eight nine A. Section five, savings clause, if any portion of this action is determined invalid by the Navajo Nation Supreme Court or by District Court of the Navajo Nation without appealing to the Navajo Nation Supreme Court, the remainder of this act shall be the law of the Navajo Nation. Attach you have exhibit A, the Navajo Nation Funding Type Budget Summary. Attach as exhibit B, the Navajo Nation General Fund Comparative Summary. Attach as exhibit C, the Navajo Nation recommended change it to the general fund budget. Attach as exhibit D, the Navajo Nation recommended conditions of appropriation and legislative concerns. Attach as exhibit E. The Navajo Nation recommended unmet needs budget. Then you have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary, Legislation Number zero one three five dash two two, sponsor Honorable Ricky Nas. This legislation was posted on July twentieth, two thousand twenty two, at eleven fifty nine P M. The five day comment period ended July twenty fifth, two thousand twenty two. There was no comment supporting this legislation. There was no comments opposing this legislation. There was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. The Chair members of R D C, that is Legislation Number zero one three five dash two two, right into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Tahai. Reading this legislation into the record. Honorable Members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second.
Motion, Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, thank you. Second by.
Chairman, I second.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Nantah. Honorable Stewart, you have twenty minutes.
A question, no, Chairman, Anna. Um, again, this is a legislation. I will go ahead and turn it forward to Mister Willie and the division to go ahead and present on behalf of this legislation. Thereafter, we will answer any, they will answer any questions from the committee. Chitilla.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart.
Mister J T Willie.
Oh, yeah, Mister Chair. Otto, uh, I have, uh, Shana, Honorable Stewart, for the, um, uh, recommendations and sponsorship of the legislation. Uh, as mentioned, uh, by Mister Tahai, the, um, legislation highlights the proposed budget for FY twenty twenty three for the Division of Economic Development. We provided all the information necessary for the hearing that took place over the past, um, weeks and we have provided, uh, any additional information that's requested by honorable members of the committee. Uh, as seen on the handouts that were provided to honorable members of R D C, we did include the additional recommendations for the exhibits as well as also in your budget binder, the, uh, initial summary for FY twenty twenty three. The Division, uh, has specific areas of opportunity to support from the administration to the precarigan professional complex. Each one of these areas, uh, within the division are assigned the business unit numbers specific to them from our administration, business regulatory, project development, our regional offices, Chinley, Eastern Shiprock, and Western Fort Defiance, as well as our Internal Services Office Support Services, our small business development, which oversees our regional business development offices. And lastly, our Navajo Real Estate, um, department and our tourism department. Uh, as recommended for the FY twenty twenty three budget, uh, we have a proposal set at seven million, three hundred and thirty six dollars and eighty nine, and eighty nine dollars. And so therefore, uh, each specific area that I went through in the hearing, uh, details tabs one through fifteen of the specific departments within the division. And also, again, as I had mentioned through the hearing process, a lot of our opportunities that we are gonna be supporting within this next fiscal year highlights those that provide, uh, opportunities for studies as well as also recommendations on the economic forecast for Navajo Nation in regards to our economists' work that has been assigned. And also, uh, moving forward with the contingency to continue cleanup and restoration of sites throughout Navajo as well as capacity to offer a level of opportunity to allow outside businesses and entrepreneurs that are Navajo own to seek these opportunities through the division in some sort of compa- a capacity of, of bonding or funding with our regional offices. Uh, we did assign majority of those cleanup funds to our Small Business Development Department, which will be working in corresponding with our regional offices. We also, uh, again, highlight these towards the five-year plan that we will also look to provide to honorable members for review, recommendation and approval in the next couple of months. That concludes my statements for now. Honorable Chair, Otto Shani, Honorable Stewart. Uh, thank you again for this opportunity to finalize and prepare this, um, budget for the Division of Economic Development for recommendations to advance forward as we move to the new fiscal year. A hat.
Thank you, Mister Willie, for that. I hear, uh, Mister Tahai, do we have any amendments on this legislation?
Uh, good morning, Chair members of R D C. We do have an amendment to Legislation Number zero one three five dash two two. Ms. Khan did send out the email regarding the recommended language. Her email was sent at eight fifty two A M. Did R D C receive those amendment language?
I don't have it.
Chair members of R D C, I will resend Ms. Khan's amendment for Legislation Number zero one three five dash two two. You give me a few minutes. Hold on, Chairman, members of R D C. Chair members of R D C, I did send it, Ms. Khan's recommended language for amendments to Legislation Number zero one three five dash two two. I have it on hand and ready to read it into the record.
Go ahead, Mister Tahai. Read it into the record.
Chair members of R D C, we have Amendment Number One for Legislation Number zero one three five dash two two, fiscal year twenty twenty three, Division of Economic Development. One, exchange exhibit A with attach, attach new exhibit A, the funding type budget summary. Exchange exhibit E with attach new exhibit E to unmet needs. Three, remember or reliter succeeding paragraphs or sections accordingly, if necessary. And this amendment shall supersede inconsistent language containing any other committee amendments which shall be confirmed to the intent or language of this amendment. The Office of Legislative Service, which notices to the sponsor of the legislation, is hereby authorized to make necessary grammatical change. Chair members of R D C, attach is into the new exhibit A. Attach, it's also gonna be the new exhibit B, which is the recommended unmet needs budget, which includes a total amount of twenty seven million, two hundred and fifteen thousand and sixty six dollars. Chair members of R D C, would you like me to read off the business unit number, the program number and the amounts needed and the explanation for the unmet needs to the FY twenty twenty three budget, um, general fund budget?
Yes, please, for the record.
The chair members of R D C for exhibit E, the unmet needs budget, you have, but business number one one zero zero one, D E D Administration. It's an amount of three hundred, three thousand, three million. Explanation of the recommended unmet needs to the FY twenty twenty three general fund budget is established in Navajo Travel Agency to capture tourist dollars within the Navajo Nation. You have business unit number one one zero zero. Your business unit number one, one, zero, zero, one, five, real estate in the amount of six hundred thousand. The explanation for the recommended unmet needs to real line recycle survey plots. Without G P S phantom and improved buildings and land on Navajo Nation business sites to attract more business opportunities. You have business unit number one, one, zero, 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 five, Chinley R B D O. In the amount of two million, establish of a rocky ridge gas market, provide service in a very remote area of the Navajo Nation. You have business unit number one, one, zero, 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 five, Chinley R B D O in the amount of one million, establish. Men of a churches chicken building. You have a business unit number one, one, zero, zero, five, Chinley R B D O in the amount of two million. Infrastructure and building for a laundry mat service. You have business unit number one, one, zero, zero, four, project development in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand. Is supplemental building and infrastructure building. Budget planning and development of a commercial and infrastructural project, industrial project. You have business unit number one, one, zero, zero, one, zero. Western R B D L in the amount of sixteen million, commercial site developments and business site cleanups. Your business unit number one, one, zero, 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 one, D E D Administration. Five hundred thousand to have a statistic data real readily available to develop strategic plans for economic development opportunities and goals. You have business unit number one, one, zero, zero, one, five, real estate in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand. Development of market data research of Navajo Nation business sites. You have business that unit number one, one, zero, 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 one, D E D Administration amount of three hundred thousand. To complete grants with A Z Office of Tourism Bonds and Bond Domination. Cameron Master Plan Development Survey of seventy-eight acres of dinosaur truck project. You have business unit number one, one, zero, 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 one, D E D Administration in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand. Match funds for tourism marketing strategies with three states, Arizona, New Mexico, Utah. You have business unit number one, one, zero, zero, one, two, support services in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand. Upgrade the K P O C Security Surveillance and Internet Service Server and R B D O Internet Bandwidth. You have business unit number one, one, zero, zero, one, two, support services in the amount of. Seven hundred and fifty thousand replacement of the K P O C Second Floor Carpet. Thermal plastic bioflint roofing membrane and sprinkler system K P O C over twenty years old. You have R B, you have business unit number one, one, zero, 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 six, Eastern R B D O in the amount of fifty-six thousand. E R D B O Building Improvement Purchase Furniture and Video System for the Conference Room. You have business unit number one, one, zero, zero, three, Business Regulatory in the amount of twenty-seven thousand Website Development for. B R D dash D E D, you have business unit number one, one, zero, zero, four, Project Development in the amount of twenty-eight. Six hundred dollars in it to establish a labor position assigned to Gannato and Newland Shopping Center with fringe benefit. You have business unit number one, one, zero, zero, one, three, Small Business Development in the amount of ninety-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight. Their creation of one position to work for on ARPA and current projects including development of a proposed five-year project. You have business unit number one, one, zero, 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 four, Project Development. Eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and one reinstated principal economic development specialist position with fringe benefit. Yeah, business unit number one, one, zero, 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 three, Business Regulatory in the amount of twenty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven. Somewhere increases or bonuses for staff. Operation budget to to shortfall on I D C appropriation. Yeah, business unit number one, one, zero, 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 one, D E D Administration, the amount of twenty-five thousand tourism. It is professional business due to business shortfall. The total amount, again, Chairmembers of R D C is twenty-seven million, two hundred and fifteen thousand and sixty-six dollars. Chairmembers of R D C, that is Exhibit E, the recommended unmet needs budget, right into the record, back to Chairman.
Uh, thank you. For that, Honorable Members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second, please. Chairman, I'm motion second. Honorable Daniels, would that you?
Mister Chair, yes, second.
Who motion?
Mister Chair, this is Daniel, I'll motion.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Daniels, for motioning, do we have a second? Stewart. I have none, we'll go ahead and put it to your vote, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Here I, I vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Gay. Honorable Gay. Honorable Daniels.
I vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland.
I vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart.
Green Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Gay.
Doggy K was green.
Thank you, we have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries, amendment one passes. Back to the main motion, any comments or questions? On twice. On three times, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I'll green.
Thank you, Honorable Gay. Honorable Daniels.
I vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Stewart.
Green Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Gay. Thank you, Honorable Freeland votes green, according to his text message, we have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. On legislation zero, one, thirty-five dash twenty-two, thank you, Honorable Stewart. Down to C, legislation one, twenty-seven dash twenty-two. Honorable Stewart, could you continue representing these legislations?
Yes, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Members of, Mister Tahie, could you read this into the record, please?
Chairmembers of R D C, you have legislation tracking number zero, one, two, seven dash twenty-two. Day, July twentieth, twenty twenty-two, titled the resolution. An action relating to the Resource and Development Committee, approving recommending it to the Budget and Finance Committee, the proposed. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget for the Navajo Division of Transportation. Purpose, the purpose of this resolution, if passed, is to prove and recommend to the Budget and Finance Committee. The proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget for the Division of Transportation. R D C has final authority over this legislation, the primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Ricky Ness. Tracking number zero, one, two, seven dash two, two. An actual relating to the Resource and Development Committee, approving recommending to the Budget Finance Committee. The fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget for the Navajo Division of Transportation and related matters. To be included in the Navajo Nation's F Y twenty twenty-three comprehensive budget. Being acted, the section one authority, the Resource and Development Committee is a standing committee of the Navajo Nation Council with. Oversight authority over the Navajo Division of Transportation. Two N N C Section five hundred A, two N N C Section five hundred C one. B, each oversight committee, including the R D C, shall review and make recommendations regarding the program. Under its oversight responsibility regarding the Navajo Nation's comprehensive budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Twelve N N C Section eight, four, zero, A, Section two, finding. In accordance with twelve N N C Section eight, four, zero, A. The R D C held public hearing to grow the testimony regarding the F Y twenty twenty-three budget. For the in dot, during the budget meeting, the R D C review and consider. The F Y twenty twenty-three budget for. In dot, as proposed by the branch chief and as requested by in dot. And as commented by upon by members of the the public. Section three, approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget for the Navajo Division of Transportation. And related matters, A, the Resource and Development Committee hereby approves the F Y twenty twenty-three budget. For the Navajo Division of Transportation as detailed in the fund type summary budget summary. Attached here to is Exhibit A, B, the R D C hereby approves a certain revisions of the branch chief's. Proposed F Y twenty twenty-three budget amount for in dot as shown in columns D and E in the General Funds Comparative Summary. Attached here to as Exhibit B. C, the R D C recommends the changes to the General Fund Budget described in Exhibit C. R D C recommends certain conditions of appropriation and legislative concerns as attached listed in Exhibit D. The R D C recommends that certain unmet needs for end up being included in the F Y twenty twenty-three comprehensive budget as explained in Exhibit E. The R D C hereby recommends that the Budget and Finance Committee approves in dots F Y twenty-two, two, three budget. And all committee recommendations as set forth in Exhibit A through E. G, as necessary, the appropriate R D C hereby authorize the R D C Chair and Vice Chair. To negotiate the R D C recommendations here within, within the Budget and Finance Committee. Section four effective date, this act shall become effective. As provided in two N N C Section one, eight, nine, A, in section five savings clause. If any portion of this act is determined invalid by the Navajo Nation Supreme Court or by District Court of the Navajo Nation. Without appeal to the Navajo Nation Supreme Court, the remainder of this act shall be law of the Navajo Nation. Attached is Exhibit A, which is a Navajo Nation Funding Type Budget Summary. Attached is Exhibit B, the Navajo Nation General Fund Comparative Summary. Attached is Exhibit C, the Navajo Nation recommended change the General Fund Budget. Attached is Exhibit D, the Navajo Nation recommended conditions of appropriation and legislative concerns. Attached is Exhibit E, the Navajo Nation recommended unmet needs budget. Then you have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for legislation number zero, one, two, seven dash two, two. Sponsors honorable Ricky Ness, this legislation was posted on July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two at eight. Eleven forty-eight P M, the five-day comment period ended July twenty-fifth. Two thousand twenty-two, there was no comment supporting this legislation, there was no comments opposing this legislation. There was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. The Chairmembers of R D C, that is legislation number zero, one, two, seven dash two, two, right into the record, back to you Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mister Tahie, for reading that into the record, yes.
Chairman, I'm sorry, I, my call dropped, I don't know if you got my vote on the last legislation, but I voted green, thank you Chairman.
Honorable Freeland, yes, we did count your vote, I, I did see your text come in, thank you. We're on legislation zero, one, twenty-seven dash twenty-two, it was read into the record, let's have a motion and a second.
A motion Freeland.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland, second by.
Stewart.
Honorable Stewart, thank you. Mister Tahie, are there any amendments?
Chairmembers of R D C, we do have an amendment, Ms. Khan did email the amendment legislation. At nine seventeen A M, I do have the. Amendment on hand, if you'd like to read into the record Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Chairmembers of R D C, you have amendment number one for legislation number zero, one, two, seven dash two, two fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Navajo Division of Transportation, one, exchange Exhibit A with attached new Exhibit A. Funding type budget summary, two, exchange Exhibit B with attached news of it be General Fund Comparative. Summary, three, exchange Exhibit E with the. Attached new Exhibit E, the unmet needs, four. Renumber or reletter succeeding paragraphs or section according if necessary. And this amendment shall supersede inconsistent language contained in any other committee amendment. Which shall be conform to the intent or language of this amendment. The Office of Legislative Service with notice to the sponsors of the legislation is hereby authorized to make. Necessary grammatical changes. Attached is Exhibit A, the funding budget type summary, in the total amount. Of. Two hundred and eleven million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one. You have attached as Exhibit B, the Navajo Nation General Fund Comparative Summary. In the total amount of two million, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and nineteen. Attacked is Exhibit E, the Navajo Nation recommended unmet needs budget. In the total amount of two hundred. Two million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and thirteen. This is for business unit number twelve, ten, zero, four. Program title in dot roads department. The unmet needs amount of two million, four hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and thirteen. The explanation for the recommended unmet needs for the F Y twenty twenty-three General Fund Budget. Funds are being requested for the increase of materials and product utilization for the road projects throughout the Navajo Nation. Including the rising cost of diesel fuel, repairs and maintenance for the specialized equipment material archaeological clearance. Task order, street light payments and road stabilization product. Chairmembers of R D C, that is the new Exhibit A, Exhibit B and Exhibit E, right into the record. Chairmembers of R D C, back to you.
Um, thank you, Mister Tahie, um, Honorable Members of R D C. I. Went forward too quickly without giving time to Honorable Stewart and Mister Garrett Smith. If we would, go ahead and give Honorable Stewart and agents twenty minutes at this time, are there any objections? None, Honorable Stewart, you have twenty minutes.
Good morning, again Chairman, and Vice Chair, I don't call this, uh, Research on Committee. I will turn the over to Shisla Ash, Mister Silversmith and other agents as well to do a presentation on this legislation. And then thereafter, we can answer any questions or concerns regarding in dot. Shisla Ash, Mister Silversmith.
Good morning, once again.
You have the floor.
Good morning, once again, Honorable delegates of the Resources and Development Committee, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Delegate, Chair Nest. And the sponsorship and opening comments by Honorable Delegate, Wilson Stewart. And the remaining delegates of the Resources and Development Committee. Thank you for giving us time here to provide our, once again, and just to provide some. Additional comments on our fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget for Navajo Division of Transportation. We appreciate the R D C's members for their continued support through our past fiscal, current fiscal year of twenty twenty-two. And we look forward to the continued support and leadership and guidance from. The Resource and Development Committee members as we achieve and. And secure and provide completion to our goals and responsibilities as a division. We are. In the past week or so, last couple of weeks, we provided our fiscal year twenty twenty-three budgets. And we, we provided all necessary requested revisions as. as requested from our various Navajo Nation entities. So we've been corresponding, communicating with our with our appropriate Navajo Nation entities and providing our complete budget and making it to a point of completion. Our overall budget, uh, general funds budget is in the amount of two million four hundred and fifty nine thousand five hundred nineteen dollars. We'd like to continue using our general funds for multiple purposes and key key services that we provide for the Navajo Nation. And that's for maintenance of the exist of our existing B I A and Navajo Nation inventory routes as far as road blading, uh, cover, cover installation, just general, just general roles and responsibilities as we do. As we deal with our maintenance responsibilities on roads and bridges. We thank our partners, partners as well for assisting us in various times, our county, state and federal partners. We also use some of these funds, our general funds for construction purposes. And we're also providing a unmet needs amount for two million four hundred and sixteen dollars, four hundred and sixteen, eight hundred and thirteen dollars. And we we requesting, Honorable, requesting for the continued support by R D C members as we try to secure these unmet needs for our division. We have multiple uses and purposes for unmet needs is for diesel fuel or heavy equipment to continuation of paying our the nation's streetlight pay, street lighting payments. And also for using some of the funds for our heavy equipment machinery and maintenance services that we that we use to keep our equipment operational and keep them for their usage on our roads and bridges as we complete our maintenance services. And then finally, the these funds will be used for other purposes such as the procurement of soil stabilizer, gravel, covers and anything in general as far as maintaining our roads and bridges across the five agencies within the Navajo Nation. So overall, in a brief summary, thank you very much. Again, once again, Honorable delegates of the Resource and Development Committee for your continued support, leadership and your favorable favorable approval of our budget for fiscal year twenty twenty three. Thank you, Honorable Delegate Stuart and Honorable Delegate Chair Rick Ness. Thank you.
Chairman, that completes the presentation.
Thank you very much, Honorable Stuart. Mr. Silverman certainly appreciate your presentation. I see a Kuroshi Shenanah. Mr. Tahi read amendment one into the record and we would like to entertain a motion in a second. At this time. Motion. Amendment one.
Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, thank you. Second by. Second.
Stuart.
Honorable Stuart, thank you. Any comments or questions on the amendment? On twice. On three times, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green.
Thank you, sir. Honorable Bagay. Honorable Daniels.
I vote green.
Yeah, Honorable Freeland.
I vote good Chairman.
Thank you. Honorable Stuart.
Green Chairman.
Thank you. Honorable Bagay.
Kialvus Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favors, zero opposed, chair not voting. Motion carries on amendment one back to the main motions and any comments or questions. Uh, here none. We'll go ahead and put it to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Bagay. Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stuart.
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Bagay.
Kialvus Green.
Uh, yeah. We have a vote of five in favors, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries for Legislation zero one twenty seven dash twenty two. Thank you, Honorable Stuart, Mr. Silverman. Moving down to D, Legislation zero one twenty eight dash twenty two. Uh, Honorable Stuart, would you continue representing this legislation?
No problem Chairman.
Thank you. We do have Ms. Shirley on the call with us. Mr. Tahi, please read this legislation into the record, please.
The chair members of R D C, you have Legislation Tracking Number one zero one two eight dash two two. Date July twentieth two thousand twenty two. Date of the res title the resolution and action relating it to Resource and Development Committee approving recommending it to the Budget and Finance Committee the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty three budget for the Navajo Environmental Protection Agency. Purpose, the purpose of this resolution if passed is to approve and recommend it to the Budget and Finance Committee the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty three budget for the Navajo Environmental Protection Agency. R D C has final authority over this legislation. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Ricky Ness. Tracking number zero one two eight dash two two. An action relating to the Resource and Development Committee approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget for the Navajo Environmental Protection Agency and related matters to be included in the Navajo Nation's F Y twenty twenty three comprehensive budget. B enacted, section one, authority. The Resource and Development Committee is a standing committee of the Navajo Nation Council with oversight authority over the Navajo Environmental Protection Agency. Two in N C section five hundred A, two in N C section five oh one C one. B, each oversight committee, including the R D C, shall review and make recommendations regarding the program under its oversight responsibility regarding the Navajo Nation's comprehensive budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Twelve in N C section eight four zero A, section two findings in accordance with twelve in N C section eight four zero A, the R D C held hearings and took relevant testimony regarding the F Y twenty twenty three budget for the N E P A. B, during these budget meetings, the R D C reviewed and considered the F Y twenty twenty three budget for the N E P A and proposed by the branch chief and as requested by N E P A and as commented upon by members of the public. Section three approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget for the Navajo Environmental Protection Agency and related matters. A, the Resource and Development Committee hereby approves the F Y twenty twenty three budget for the Navajo Environmental Protection Agency as detailed in the fund type of budget summary. Attached here to as exhibit A. B, the R D C hereby approves that certain revisions of the branch chief's proposed F Y twenty twenty three budget amount for E N E P A as shown in columns D and E in the General Fund Comparative Summary. Attached here to as exhibit B. C, the R D C recommends the changes to the budget fund to the general fund budget described in exhibit C. D, the R D C recommends certain conditions of appropriation and legislative concerns as listed in exhibit D. E, the R D C recommends that certain unmet needs for N E P A be included in the F Y twenty twenty three comprehensive budget as explained in exhibit E. F, the R D C hereby recommends to the Budget and Finance Committee approves M P A's F Y twenty twenty three budget and all committee recommendations as set forth in exhibit A through E. G, as necessary and appropriate, the R D C hereby authorize the R D C Chair and Vice Chair to negotiate the R D C's recommendation here within with the Budget and Finance Committee. Section two, section four, effective date, this act shall become effective as provided in twelve two in N C section one eight nine A. Section five savings clause, if any portion of this action is determined invalid by the Navajo Nation Supreme Court or by a district court of the Navajo Nation without appeal to the Navajo Nation Supreme Court, the remainder of this act shall be the law of the land. Attached is exhibit A, which is a Navajo Nation of fun type of budget summary. Attached is exhibit B, the Navajo Nation General Fund Comparative Summary. Attached is exhibit C, the Navajo Nation recommended changes to the general fund budget. Attached is exhibit D. The Navajo Nations recommended conditions of appropriation and legislative concerns. Attached as exhibit E, the Navajo Nation recommended unmet needs budget. Then you have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Republic Review Summary for Legislation Number zero one two eight dash two two. Sponsors Honorable Ricky Ness. This legislation was posted on July twentieth two thousand twenty two at eleven fifty P M. The five day comment period ended July twenty fifth two thousand and twenty two. There was no comment supporting this legislation. There was no comments opposing this legislation. There was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of R D C, that is Legislation Number zero one two eight dash two two run into the record. Back to you Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahi. Honorable members of R D C, let's have a motion in a second.
Motion Freeland.
Honorable Freeland, thank you. Second.
Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, thank you. Mr. Tahi. It's okay. Honorable Stuart and Ms. Shirley, you have twenty minutes.
Negotiation, I I'll go ahead and turn the floor over to Ms. Shirley for a presentation and then there.
Ms. Shirley. Ms. Shirley, press star six to unmute.
Um, Yateh Benet, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, you may proceed.
Okay, um, Yateh Nana, she can not see me. I don't, um, thank you, um, Mr. Tahi for reading through the legislation. Um, zero one two eight dash twenty two. I don't, um, to Honorable Chair Rick Ness and to Honorable Delegate Stuart and Honorable Delegate Freeland, thank you for sponsoring this legislation. I don't, um, she Belinda Shirley in here had a um, executive director for Navajo EPA. And then what we have for you all today is, um, they still the job that I had to see, um, could he have seen someone here many times. Um, Navajo EPA, we are, um, we were allocated um, one million three hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and forty five dollars. That's, um, the proposed general fund budget that we have, um, for you all today. And, um, we have two hundred and thirty nine thousand three hundred ninety seven dollars going to Navajo EPA administration. I don't one hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and eighty dollars going to the air and toxic department. I don't, we have a hundred and ninety three thousand nine hundred and thirty eight going to the surface and groundwater department. I don't one hundred and seven thousand two hundred and five going to the waste regulatory and compliance department. Three hundred and thirty two thousand two hundred and thirty seven dollars. This makes, um, this is the largest amount being allocated to the resource conservation recovery program. And again, this program, um, addresses solid waste issues here on the Navajo Nation or they enforce about the Navajo Nation Solid Waste Act. I don't two hundred and eighty nine thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars going to the criminal enforcement department. This is, um, also the second largest allocation of general funds going to, um, the criminal enforcement department. And then, um, radon program is, um, is, um, we have thirty seven thousand nine hundred and seventy four dollars, um, allocated to our radon program. So A, um, I would tell her and then the majority of our where general fund budget does go to, um, personnel. And then second by, um, travel and, um, other personal travel expenses. And then, um, we do have some monies allocated for, um, contractual services to do, um, grant grant writing and also to address solid waste issues. And then I know that in the last, um, budget hearings that we were that, um, we've had last week, Navajo EPA did request for, um, some unmet needs. And then, um, Ms. Eugenia Quintana can also help me with, um, going through, um, those unmet needs budgets. And then in addition, we also, um, had requested for, um, a carryover fund from, um, the business unit, um, one one zero one one and one one zero one four. So and the purpose of the carryovers, um, Shenatani is to, um, address other sites within, um, the Navajo Nation. So we wish to, um, do additional illegal dump abatement and there were a lot of requests from different chapters across the Navajo Nation asking for, um, asking for trash bags, even gloves, reflector vests when it came to, um, the earth earth day in a in April. So we wanted to make sure that we had enough funds on hand to, um, to to respond to those requests. So, um, I would tell her and a chair and honorable members, if I could have, um, Ms. Eugenia can help me with the Ms. Eugenia Quintana help me with the unmet needs portion of our request there.
Thank you. Ms. Quintana, you have the floor.
Good morning, um, Yateh have been a, um, Chair and members of the Resources and Development Committee. Um, I will just do a brief summary of the unmet needs that we requested. We requested unmet needs in the amount of one hundred forty two thousand sixty three dollars. And this is to support startup costs associated with, um, establishing a minor source program. Um, as many of you are aware, um, the Navajo Nation, under the Air Quality Control Program has proposed a rule to establish a minor source permitting program under the Navajo Nation's Pollution Prevention Control Act. And, um, part of what I related earlier is that right now the Navajo Nation does not have the authority to regulate minor sources of air pollution on the Navajo Nation. Currently, this is under the, um, umbrella of the U S E P A under what is called the tribal minor new source you program for Indian country. And what we are, what our, what our goal is, is to have these minor source program regulations approved um, by the R D C thereafter, it will go to U S E P A. And it will, this, these program regulations will also be accompanied by a treatment as a state application. And this will give the Navajo Nation a lot more control over its own air resources. It's going to allow the Navajo Nation to regulate emissions of minor sources of air pollution that may also impact the environment and the public health and welfare. So once these, um, minor source permit regulations are approved, there are going to be some, some, um, uh, task aligned with a fully establishing this program. Um, some of the things that will be needed are to prepare for receiving final EPA approval to the regulations. Um, in the interim, also, there will be some tasks involved in tracking this. If U S E P has any questions or discussions that are needed regarding the finalization of this, um, those need to be addressed. Um, there also needs to be, um, a mechanism to develop permit applications locally for the categories that will be subject to permitting under these minor source regulations. We are going to have to develop technical review processes, post technical review processes, processes for public noticing, when the public noticing could be required. Final review processes, um, we also need to develop a fund management plan um, for the revenue that this minor source permit program will be receiving. So there will be minor source permit fees involved. And we also need to work on identifying the types and quantities of equipment that will be used by staff for inspections. We need to develop standard operating procedures for conducting investigations and many other aspects, um, as well. Um, I would also like to add that, um, when the minus those program reg- when the minor source program regulations were being public notice, we did receive many supporting comments from the public to these regulations. We received, um, supporting comments from individuals, from counselor, Red Mesa, N F T S bus, areas like that, areas where, um, people in these communities really felt that um, local sources of air pollution, particularly from oil and gas facilities, were affecting the environment and their health. So this is one, one of the main reasons why we really would like to see our own Navajo Nation Minor Source Program Regulations put in place. And we would really appreciate, um, support for our unmet needs as a way to get this program started up off the ground and running. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana. Honorable Stewart, back to you.
Okay, Chairman, that, that concludes the presentation, um, from the, um, agents on this legislation, so we can go ahead and move forward with the, um, questions or amendments as well, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. We do have a motion and a second in place. Honorable Members of R D C, any comments or questions before we entertain the amendment? I hear none. Mr. Tahai, could you read the Amendment One language that was sent to us?
Chair members of R D C, we have Amendment Number One for Legislation Number Zero One Two Eight Dash Two Two, Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty Three, Navajo Environmental Protection Agency. This E, this amendment was emailed to you all by Ms. Mariana Khan at nine thirty-five A M. The amendment reads as follows. One, page two, line twenty-five, adds section four as follows. Section four, recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee carryovers for the Navajo Environmental Protection Agency. A, the Resource and Development Committee recommends the carryover of two hundred ninety-five thousand or unexpected balances for the Criminal Enforcement Department Number one-one-one-zero-one-four. B, the Resource and Development Committee recommends the carryover of seventy-one thousand, two hundred or unexpected balances and for the Resources Conservation Recovery Program, one-one-one-zero-one-one. Two, exchange Exhibit A and E currently attached to legislation is zero-one-two-eight-dash-two-two and replace it with the attached new Exhibit A and E. Three, renumber or reletter succeeding paragraphs or sections accordingly if necessary, and this amendment shall supersede inconsistent language contained in any other committee amendment, but shall be conformed to the intent or language of this amendment. The Office of Legislative Services, with notice to the sponsor of the legislation, is hereby authorized to make necessary programical changes. Attached is Exhibit A, which is the Navajo Nation Funding Type Budget Summary. The total amount is seventeen million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six. Attached is Exhibit E, the Navajo Nation Recommended Unmet Needs Budget. Business Unit Number One-One-One-Zero-Zero-One-One. Program title, Navajo Nation EPA Administration, the amount of unmet need is five hundred thousand. The explanation for the recommended unmet needs is requesting funds to pay a contract to help us prepare competitive grant applications for B I L grant opportunities. Business Unit Number One-One-One-Zero-One-One. Resources Conference Conservation and Recovery. The unmet need is eleven thousand, six hundred and fourteen. Explanation for the unre- unrecommended unmet needs, travel and supply expenses to respond to illegal dumping resort reports from across the nation. Business Unit Number One-One-One-Zero-One-Four Criminal Enforcement Department. The amount of unmet need is seventeen thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine. It's for travel expenses for criminal enforcement officers to respond to environmental violations, spills, and other public emergencies. Business Unit Number is new. The program title is Minor Source Permit Program. The amount of unmet need is one hundred and forty-two thousand and sixty-three dollars. The explanation for the recommended unmet needs is to try to maintain oil and gas emissions for wells, create and maintain a database and community outreach and education. Then you have a memorandum attached addressed to the Twenty-four Navination Council from Belinda Shirley, Executive Director, Navajo Nation Environmental Protection Agency, date July twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-two. This is regarding for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, the Navajo EPA requests to carry over general funds from Business Unit Number One-One-One-Zero-One-Four Criminal Enforcement Department and One-One-One-Zero-One-One Resource Conservation and Recovery Program to the Object Code Sixty-five zero-zero contractual services for One-One-One-Zero-One-One Resources Conservation Recovery Program for legal dumping, obtained and prevention. The Chair Members of R D C, that is the amendment right into the record. Back to you Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahai. Honorable Members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second for Amendment One.
Chair, this is Belinda. May I speak?
Let me establish a motion first for Amendment One. Honorable Members of R D C. Motion.
Motion, Stewart.
Honorable Stewart, thank you. Second. Janamta. I need a second. Honorable Daniels, thank you for seconding the motion. Uh, let me go to Ms. Shirley, your statement on Amendment One.
Um, Shunadani, I believe Mr. Mr. Tahai read, um, that administration unmet needs request was five hundred thousand. Um, I believe the amount was, um, fifty thousand.
Mr. Tahai.
Chair Members of R D C, attached to Exhibit E, the Navajo Nation Recommended Unmet Needs Budget for Business Unit Number One-One-One-Zero-Zero-One. In N E P A Administration, the unmet need is fifty thousand. And it's requesting funds to pay contract to help us prepare competitive grants application for bill grant opportunities. Chair Members of R D C, that is Exhibit E, Business Unit Number One-One-One-Zero-Zero-One, read into the record. Back to you Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahai. Ms. Shirley, are you okay with that?
Um, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Members of R D C, any comments or questions on Amendment One? On twice. On three times. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote on Amendment One? Honorable Begay, how do you vote? On Amendment One. Honorable Daniels.
Green.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Honorable Freeland? Honorable Freeland votes green according to his text message that came in. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. Let me go back to Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Honorable Begay?
Chair, was green.
Thank you. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries on. Amendment One, back to the main motion. Honorable Members of R D C, any other comments or questions? On twice. On three times. Let's put it to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote? On the main motion. Honorable Begay, how do you vote? Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart? Honorable Stewart? Press star six to unmute. Honorable Vice Chair Walker?
Chair, I'll vote green.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker? Thank you, Honorable. Thank you. Honorable Begay? Honorable Begay?
The Chairman, Honorable Kealan Begay votes green.
Okay, I did. Honorable Kealan Begay Junior votes green according to his text message, as well as Honorable Stewart. His star six is not working, so he's voting green. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries on Legislation Zero-One-Twenty-eight-Dash-Twenty-Two. Thank you, Honorable Stewart and Ms. Shirley here and your staff.
Chairman. Chairman Freeland, do you have my green vote?
Uh, yes, Honorable Freeland, I did get your green vote. Your, your text message did come in, so we do have a vote, Honorable Freeland, of five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Chairman.
We're down to, yes? Yes?
I, I did say, thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We're down to E, Legislation Zero-One-One-Nine-Dash-Twenty-Two. Honorable Stewart, are you still on the call with us?
Yes, Chairman, I'm still here.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Tahai, could you read this legislation and for the record, please?
The Chair Members of R D C, you have Legislation Summary Sheet, Tracking Number Zero-One-One-Nine-Dash-Two-Two, date July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, title of the resolution and act relating to the Resource and Development Committee, approving and recommending it to the Budget and Finance Committee, the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget for the Navajo Division of Community Development. Purpose, the purpose of this resolution, if passed, is to approve and recommend to the Budget and Finance Committee the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget for the Navajo Division of Community Development. Resource and Development Committee has final authority over this legislation. The primary response of this legislation is Audible Ricky Nez, Tracking Number Zero-One-One-Nine-Dash-Two-Two, in action relating to the Resource and Development Committee, approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget for the Division of Community Development and related matters to be included in the Navajo Nations F Y two thousand twenty-three Comprehensive Budget. Being acted, section one, authority, A, the Resource and Development Committee, R D C, is a standing committee of the Navajo Nation Council with oversight authority over the Division of Community Development. Two in N C, section five hundred A, two in N C, section of five oh-one C one. B, each oversight committee, including the R D C, shall review and make recommendations regarding the program under its oversight responsibility regarding the Navajo Nations Comprehensive Budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Twelve in N C, section eight four zero eight, the section two findings, in accordance with twelve in N C, section eight four zero eight, the R D C held hearings and took relevant testimony regarding the F Y two thousand twenty-three budget for the C D C D. During these budget hearings, the R D C reviewed and considered the F Y two thousand twenty-three budget for D C D and proposed by the branch chiefs as requested by D C D and as commented upon by members of the public. Section three, approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget for the Division of Econ, for Division of Community Development and Related Matters. A, the Resource and Development Committee hereby approves the F Y two thousand twenty-three budget for the Division of Community Development as detailed in the Fund Type Budget Summary. Attached here to is Exhibit A. B, the R D C hereby approves a certain revisions to the branch chief's proposed F Y two thousand twenty-three budget amount for D C D as shown in columns D and E in the General Fund Comparative Summary. Attached here to is Exhibit B. C, the D's, the R D C recommends the changes to the general fund budget described in Exhibit C. D, the R D C recommends certain conditions of appropriation legislative concerns as listed in Exhibit D. The R D C recommends that certain unmet needs for D C D be included in the F Y two thousand twenty-three Comprehensive Budget as explained in Exhibit E. F, the R D C hereby recommends that the Budget and Finance Committee approves the D C D's F Y two thousand twenty-three budget and all committee recommendations as set forth in Exhibit A through E. G, as necessary and appropriate, the R D C hereby authorize the R D C Chair and Vice Chair to negotiate the R D C recommendations herein with, with the Budget and Finance Committee. Section four, effective date, this act shall become effective as provided in two in N C, section one-eight-nine A, section five, savings clause, if any portion of this action is determined invalid by the Navajo Nation Supreme Court or by District Court of the Navajo Nation without appeal to the Navajo Nation Supreme Court, the remainder of this act shall be law of the land. Attached is Exhibit A, the Navajo Nation Fund Type Summary. Attached is Exhibit E, the Navajo Nation General Fund Comparative Summary. Attached is Exhibit C, the Navajo Nation Recommended Changes to the General Fund Budget. Attached is Exhibit D, the Navajo Nation Recommended Conditions of Appropriation and Legislative Concerns. Attached is Exhibit E, the Navajo Nation Recommended Unmet Needs Budget. We get the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Number Zero-One-One-Nine-Dash-Two-Two, sponsor Honorable Ricky Nez. This legislation was posted on July twentieth, two thousand twenty-two at eleven eighteen P M. The five-day comment period ended July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this legislation. There was no comment opposing this legislation. There was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. The Chair Members of R D C, that is Legislation Number Zero-One-One-Nine-Dash-Two-Two, right into the record. Back to you Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahai, for reading the legislation. Yeah, Honorable Members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second.
Chair, difference angle.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels, for the motion. Is there a second?
Fairly.
Honorable Freeland, is that you?
I think it was Honorable Walker that got before me, so Honorable take your.
Okay. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, thank you for that. Honorable Stewart, you have twenty minutes with Dr. Yellaman and staff.
Okay, Chairman, I'll, um, again, thank you, Chairman, and R D C members. I would like to present with, um, Division of Community Development, Dr. Yellman and other agents as well on this legislation. I'll go ahead and turn the floor over to Dr. Yellman and other agents. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Yellman?
Yatay Chair.
You may proceed.
Okay, good morning, Honanna Hihat Bill Yate. Um, honorable members of RDC, good morning, and thank you to, um, our sponsors, and, um, thank you to, uh, uh, thank you for giving us this opportunity to come before you. I am joined with, um, our department managers and our senior accountant, um, and our staff from D C D, um, and good morning to all those listening and to my colleagues who've already gone before us, um, before D C D. Um, we come before you from the Division of Community Development, um, to share with you, um, the two thousand twenty-three planning allocations. Um, our goals, um, always have been to carry out, um, the budget allocation. Um, the budget allocations are for, um, improved services to the Navajo people. We also work closely with the one hundred and ten chapters. Um, and of course, our goal is to assist the one hundred and ten chapters so that they can work towards local, um, improvement, local operations. Of course, we, um, have challenges, and we work closely with the Auditor's Office on, um, improving those local internal controls and compliance. Um, and then, of course, we work closely with the Department of D P M to fulfill all of the. Chair. Can you hear me?
Dr. Yellman, yes, we can hear you. Chairman Nez was knocked off the call. You can give him a minute. Thank you.
Honorable Members of RDC, Mr. Tahie, I'm back on the call. I'm in one area of my house, and I got knocked off the call.
Honorable Stewart. Chairman, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
The Chairman, yes, we can hear you. Dr. Yellman, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Chair. Um, just in closing, Chair, the Division of Community Development, we do, um, present, um, four unmet needs. Um, and we did present that in exhibit E. Also, um, the Division of Community Development, we did revise, um, uh, budget forms that were included, um, and we present those as amendments. Um, and if necessary, um, Mr. Davis can, um, present or provide additional information on those amendments. Um, but Chair, that does conclude our presentation, and we do, um, appreciate and seek the support of the RDC. If you have.
Thank you. Dr. Yellman. Honorable Members of RDC, do you have any comments or questions? Uh, here none. Mr. Tahie, there was an amendment language sent to us. Could you read that into the record, sir?
The Chair members of RDC, I have yet to receive the amendment language for legislation number zero one one nine dash two two regarding community development. I did miss E, I did email Ms. Khan to send me those amendment language. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you. Honorable Members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second for Amendment One.
Motion, Daniel.
Thank you, Honorable Daniels. Second?
Chairman, I second.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Are there any comments or questions on Amendment One? On twice?
Mr. Chair? This is Marianakon.
Go ahead, Ms. Khan.
I didn't know if I heard Mr. Tahie correctly. I believe he said he did not receive my, um, legislation one one nine amendment language. Mister, I would like to know if Mr. Tahie has received that language now.
The Chairman.
Thank you for that.
The Chairman, Members of the Committee.
Ms. Khan, I did receive the amendment right now. Um, we're having some technical difficulties, Mr. Tahie. Sometimes we can hear what's being said and partially. And I think that's why my colleagues are having a hard time trying to unmute as well. And I, when, when you said what you said, I thought you had already read that into the record, so I had a motion and a second in place. But if you would, could you read the amendment language at this time?
The Chair members of the Resource and Committee, I have amendment number one for legislation number zero one one nine dash two two fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Division of Community Development. One, exchange exhibit A with attached new exhibit A, fund type budget summary. Two, exchange exhibit E with attached new exhibit E, the unmet needs. Three, renumber or reletter succeeding paragraphs or sections accordingly if necessary, and this amendment shall supersede inconsistent language contained in or other committee amendments which shall be conformed to the intent or language of this amendment. The Office of Legislative Services with notices to the sponsor of the legislation is hereby authorized to make the cyclical grammatical changes. Chair members of RDC, that is amendment number one, run into the record.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie. Now, let's reestablish the motion and the second. There was a motion by Honorable Daniels. Are you able to motion that again?
Mr. Chair, um, yeah, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Thank you. Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Your second?
Uh, yes, Chairman. Yes, viva.
Okay, thank you. Amendment one language was read into the record by Mr. Tahie. It was motioned by Honorable Daniels and seconded by Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Honorable Members of RDC, do you have any comments or questions on the amendment? On twice? On three times. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Keel and Begay Junior votes green according to his text message. Honorable Daniels?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland votes green according to his text message. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor. Excuse me. Five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Thank you. Back to the main motions. Any comments or questions? On twice? On three times. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Begay votes green according to his text message. Honorable Daniels?
I vote green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland also votes green according to his text message. Honorable Stewart?
Green.
Thank you. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting. Motion carries on legislation zero one one nine dash twenty-two. Thank you, Honorable Stewart and Dr. Yellman. As she have. Moving down to F. Legislation zero one twenty-six dash twenty-two, Division of Natural Resources. Honorable Stewart, are you able to represent this, um, present this legislation for me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Tahie, could you read this legislation into the record, please?
Chair members of RDC, you have legislation summary sheet for tracking number zero one two six dash two two, date July twentieth at two thousand twenty-two, title of the resolution, an act relating to the Resource and Development Committee approving and recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget for the Navajo Division of Natural Resources. Purpose, the purpose of this resolution, if passed, is to approve and recommend it to the, recommend to the Budget and Finance Committee the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget for the Navajo Division of Natural Resources. Resource and Development Committee has final authority over this legislation. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Audible Ricky Nez, tracking number zero one two six dash two two, an act relating to the Resource and Development Committee approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget for the Division of Natural Resources and related matters to be included in the Navajo Nation's FY two thousand twenty-three comprehensive budget. Being acted, section one, authority, A, the Resource and Development Committee is a standing committee of the Navajo Nation Council with oversight authority over the Division of Natural Resources. Two in N C, section five hundred A, two in N C, section five oh one C, one. B, each oversight committee shall include the RDC, including the RDC, shall review and make recommendations regarding the program under its oversight responsibility regarding the Navajo Nation's comprehensive budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Twelve in N C, section eight forty A, the section two findings, in accordance with twelve in N C, section eight four zero A, the RDC held public hearings, took relevant testimony regarding the FY two thousand twenty-three budget for the D, the D N R. B, during these budget meetings, the RDC revised and reconsidered the FY two thousand twenty-three budget for D N R as proposed by the branch chief and as requested by D N R and as commented upon by members of the public. Section three, approving recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget for the Division of Natural Resources and related matters. A, the Resource and Development Committee hereby approves the FY two thousand twenty-three budget for the Division of Natural Resources as attached in funding type budget summary attached here to as exhibit A. B, the RDC hereby approves certain revisions of the branch chief's proposed FY two thousand twenty-three budget amount for D N R as shown in columns D and E in the general fund comparative summary attached here to as exhibit B. C, the RDC recommends the changes to the general fund budget described in exhibit C. D, the RDC recommends certain conditions or appropriations and legislative concerns as attached as listed in exhibit D. E, the RDC recommends that certain unmet needs for D N R be included in the FY two thousand twenty-three comprehensive budget as explained in exhibit E. F, the RDC hereby recommends that the Budget and Finance Committee approves D N R's FY twenty-two-three budget and all committee recommendations as set forth in exhibit A through E. G, as necessary and appropriate, the RDC hereby authorize the RDC Chair and Vice Chair to negotiate the RDC recommendations herein within to the Budget and Finance Committee. Section four, effective date, this act shall become effective as provided in two in N C, section one eight nine A. The section five saving clause, as if any portion of this a, action is determined invalid by the Navajo Nation Supreme Court or by District Court of the Navajo Nation without appeal to the Navajo Nation Supreme Court, the remainder of this act shall be law of the land. Attached as exhibit A, the Navajo Nation of Fund Type Summary, attached as exhibit B, the Navajo Nation General Fund Comparative Summary. Attached as exhibit C, the Navajo Nation change, recommended changes to the general fund budget. Attached as exhibit E, the Navajo Nation recommended conditions of appropriation legislative concerns. Attached as exhibit E, the Navajo Nations recommended unmet needs budget. Then you have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary, legislation number zero one two six dash two two, sponsors Audible Ricky Nez. This legislation was posted on July twentieth at two thousand twenty-two at eleven forty-five P M. The five-day comment period ended July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this legislation, there was no comment opposing this legislation, there was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of RDC, that is legislation number zero one two six dash two two, run into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahie. Honorable Members of the Resource and Development Committee, let's have a motion and a second.
Motion, Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, thank you. Second?
Chairman, I second.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Honorable Stewart and Ms. Charamaya, you have twenty minutes to present.
I was just, now Chairman, um, go ahead and turn the call over to Ms. Charamaya for presentation tonight, and then after that, we'll do any amendments or questions that need to be answered.
Thank you. Ms. Charamaya, you have to pull.
Thank you, Chairman Nez. Good morning, everyone. Thank you, um, Honorable RDC members. Thank you, Chairman Nez, for sponsoring the legislation, and thank you, Honorable Delegate Stewart, for co-sponsoring the legislation. During the RDC budget hearing, the Division of Natural Resources presented their proposed budget for FY two thousand twenty-three. Presented were the budget for each of the twelve departments. Included additional information and revisions. The total budget proposal for FY two thousand twenty-three, the total comprehensive budget proposal, excuse me, is two hundred and nineteen million, four hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. The unmet needs budget is five million, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars, and the carryover budget is one million, eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and five cents. We did make revisions to our exhibit A and exhibit B. This will be amendments to those exhibits in the legislation. Our proposed budget will cover essential operations of the twelve departments of D N R. This will allow for essential operations, essential services to the Navajo Nation's government entities, to the Navajo Nation people, including stewardship of the Navajo Nation's natural resources. Um, the information that was revised was provided to the Office of Legislative Council. Uh, we, I stand here with Ms. Brenda Holgate for any questions you may have on additional revisions that need to be made or additional information that needs to be submitted. We appreciate your favorable approval of the D N R budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charamaya. Honorable Stewart, back to you.
Okay, Chairman, that present, that concludes the presentation, and then we can go with any amendments or, uh, questions from the committee. Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Uh, Mr. Tahie, Ms. Khan, I have not received any amendment language in my email. Is there any?
The Chair members of RDC, I have not received the amendment language from Ms. Khan as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Khan.
I was just wanting to make sure that I had the latest A, B, and E um, from the Division of Natural Resources. Um, I wanted to, um, give the, um, the time and date of the last transmissions of exhibit A, B, and E. And I, the latest one I have is Monday. And I, the latest one I have is Monday, five fifty-four P M for exhibits A, B, and E. And I just needed to insert that in the amendment so that we all know which revision, final copy that we are, um, amending today at this meeting. Mister Chair, if the Division of Natural Resources would confirm that that, that is the date, the last and time that the last amendments to A, B, and E were emailed to the committee and to Mister Tahhi and I. Then I can just put that date on the amendment language and send that out to you, Mister Chair. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Khan. Honorable Stewart, you and your agents may respond.
Mister Chairman, all turn over to Ms. Jeremiah to respond to that amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Um, you are correct. That email that was sent to you on Monday at five fifty-four P M is the latest information for exhibit A, exhibit B, and exhibit E.
Thank you, Miss.
Ms. Khan, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Jeremiah, and thank you, Mister Chair. I'm just putting that date right now in the amendment so that we are all very clear and that I have, um, also, um, I have the rest of the amendment and as, um, this, this particular amendment has, um, has the carryovers stated and also has particular waiver language with regard to the Land Acquisition Trust Fund. Last year during the fiscal year budget period two thousand twenty-two, the Navajo, the Resources and Development Committee had to provide waiving, um, the Land Acquisition Trust Funds so that, um, the money could be spent in the manner that the Land Department wanted to spend it. And that is the reason for an additional section in the amendment you will see, you will receive very shortly. Now, I will send that to you, and if you have questions, please, um, I, I can answer them, and I will be sending that right now.
Thank you very much, Ms. Khan, for that. Um, oh, oh, we just wait on the email that you're gonna send to us, Honorable members of R D C, before there's any motions or seconds. Do you have any comments or questions? Honorable Kealan Bagay.
Uh, Chairman, uh, yeah, it's an honor. Uh, Ecuador legislative concerns, I don't know if that needs to be appropriately be, uh, inserted at this, uh, air, at this level. Uh, great officials, the other area, um, a lot of time, um, the, we know that a lot of some of the programs have scaled back or some of their budgets have been, uh, 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 reduced, uh, from prior year, um, budget. Uh, Kado, uh, maybe I have a question to O M B, uh, specifically the allocation of reducing some of these, uh, funding, uh, to certain programs within the Navajo Nation, uh, the Division of Natural Resource. Uh, uh, um,
The Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Tahai, go ahead.
Yes, the document that Ms. Brenda Holgate is referencing was sent on Monday, August 1st, 2022 at 5:48 PM. I sent it out to members of RDC as well. This is the same document that Ms. Khan was referencing earlier on the last transmission that was sent regarding the exchange of Exhibit A through E. So if Ms. Khan, you, if you look at that email that was sent to you directly, you could also see those amendments that was included. In addition, Ms. Jeremiah, your phone line is echoing and is causing the feedback on this Zoom meeting. So if that can be corrected on your end, we would greatly appreciate it. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you. Oh, hey. Uh, Ms. Khan, it was sent to us on Monday at 4:00 PM, August 1st.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I, I, I just got in on the conversation a little late because I was just returning to my desk and speaking with Mr. Tahai. Now, I, I do see where we are at. Thank you very much for being patient with me.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Holgate, you may proceed.
Okay. Column D to answer Honorable Kialan Begay's question.
Ms. Holgate? Ms. Holgate? You have a lot of echo behind you. There is a lot of echo.
Chairman Nez, this is Rowena, Ms. Jeremiah. I'm, I'm sorry about the echo. We're in a conference room and what you're hearing is the, the central air and we cannot turn that off. Does it sound a little better now?
Uh, i- it's fine. Go ahead and proceed.
Okay, here I go again. Again, good morning. I'm going to refer to our amendment Exhibit A, column D. Why we encounter within DNR some programs where their allocation, their planning allocation decreased. We were instructed that we had to utilize our FY 2022 general fund planning base amount for FY 2023. Each department for FY 2023 did apply their planning base amount plus their personal lapse funds from FY 2022. OMB and Navajo Nation Office of the President and Vice President. They instructed us to just use the general fund planning base allocation, which did not include the personal lapse fund. From the previous year. And that caused some of our programs, the funding decrease such as administration. Does that answer the question? Back to you, RDC.
Hello?
Hello, this is Rowena. Did we get cut off?
Ms. Jeremiah. Chairman Nez and RDC members, Chairman Nez got knocked off the call again. So if we can make him for him to rejoin again.
Mr. Tahai? Can you hear me now?
Chairman, yes, we can hear you now. Welcome back to the call.
I'm sitting in one place, but I keep, keep getting knocked off here, so. Ms. Holgate, did you complete your presentation?
Good morning, Chair. I'll go. Do you want me to repeat what I just said earlier?
Um, just towards the end there.
Chairman Nez, what occurred here was Division of Natural Resources used the incorrect allocation. Therefore, the correction was that we had to go back and use our planning based amount.
Thank you. Are you done?
Back to you, sir, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Khan, do you have the amendment language prepared?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I, I believe, I thought I had sent that out. Uh, Mr. Tahai, did, did you receive it?
The Chairmembers of RDC, I have not received the electronic version via email of the amendment language, but Ms. Khan did hand carry over the amendment language for Legislation 126-22 regarding the Division of Natural Resources, which I have it. I'm ready to read into the record, Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I see for that, for some reason, I hadn't pressed the send button. Now I've pressed the send button. Just getting ahead of myself or not following up. So it should be in everybody's email right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. I did receive it just now. Certainly appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Tahai, could you read that into the record, please?
Chairmembers of RDC, this is Amendment 1 for Legislation 0126-22 Fiscal Gear 2023, Navajo Division of Natural Resources. 1, Page 2, Line 24, adds Section 4 as follows. Section 4, recommended to the Budget and Finance Committee carryovers for the Navajo Division of Natural Resources. A, the Resource and Development Committee recommends the carryover of 351,725 or unexpected balances for the AGR District Grazing Committee, number 115002. B, the Resource and Development Committee recommends the carryover of 6,500 or unexpected balances for the Mineral Department, number 115004. C, the Resource and Development Committee recommends the carryover of 130,670 or unexpected balance for the AGR Eastern NAD slash JD Boards, number 115005.
Mr. Tahai? Mr. Tahai?
Yes, Chairman?
Could you pause one moment, please? I received a text from Honorable Begay for a point of order. Um, did you ever get a hold of OMB?
Chairmembers of RDC, I did email them. I did text message them. I've yet to see OMB on the call.
So they're not on the call yet?
The Chairmembers of RDC, they are not on the call.
Okay, let me go to Honorable Begay, your point of order, please.
Uh, Chairman, um, as a point of, my point of order is that, uh, I believe, uh, my, my specific question, there is a response by the presenter, the Acting Division Director. Uh, I guess the key thing that troubles me is they were instructed, I mean, how much the overall of the budget, of the comprehensive budget in each of the program that we are, uh, discussing was specific direction or instruction from the executive branch, upper management. So if that word has been utilized on record, I specifically would like to request for a document from the, maybe the Chief of Staff or the, each of the Division Director, specifically how each of the division or the programs were instructed. That's the key word that was been mentioned, that they were instructed to go with the prior allocation and the, uh, did I hear, uh, uh, the Executive Director saying that to leave the, uh, personal lapse fund as is, just only use the general funds. I'd like to go, get to the specific of what the programs were instructed to do and yet we're just following the pro, uh, the process of disapproving it. We have a lot of area Chairman, we need to discuss. These are the times that we need to do before we approve the legislations, Chairman. But that's the two area. Maybe point of order and then a point of privilege if, 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 if that's allowable to be utilized at the committee level. Requesting for those document of the instruction, the report, the request from OMB.
Okay, Honorable Begay, your, your point of order is you're requesting documents from Division of Natural Resources on the personal lapse fund as well as, um, you would like to have a point of privilege. You, we, I put a pause on reading the amendment language. I apologize for not getting back to you for a follow-up, but at this time, we can take care of your concerns of your point of order and any questions that need to be asked at this time. So I'll give the floor back to Ms. Jeremiah and also Mr. Tahai, if you would, um, somehow contact OMB. Hopefully they could get on the call as well. Thank you, Ms. Jeremiah.
The Chair?
Thank you, Chairman Nez. I can.
Mr. Tahai, go ahead, Mr. Tahai.
Chairman, um, I did receive a text message from OMB. They are on the call. Also, um, per Delegate Begay's, um, information that he did provide, he did mention the Chief of Staff. I'm assuming this is the Chief of Staff for the Office of the President. I did reach out to Davis Filford via text messaging and ask him to get, um, Chief of Staff Paulson Chaco on the call as well as Arbitt Mitchell, who assisted DNR on this budget legislation when they were being heard of during our oversight budget hearing as well. So those communications have been made for the record, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Tahai, we'll have, um, Ms. Jeremiah respond and then we'll go to OMB and then Chief of Staff Chaco or Mr. Mitchell. Uh, Ms. Jeremiah, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman Nez. So I'd like to, um, refer to a memorandum from, um, President Nez to the Executive Branch Division and offices that dated June 27th, 2022. In that memorandum.
Could you, um, please send that memorandum to Mr. Tahai so he could distribute that to us?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Filford from OPVP. Uh, Chief Chaco will be on the line here shortly.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Filford. Um, Ms. Jeremiah, could you send that memorandum to Mr. Tahai so he could disseminate that to leadership?
Yes, we will get that sent. Over. So this memo gave the, the Executive Branch a general fund base allocation. And so the Division of Natural Resources was given a base allocation of $22,608,631. Dr. Shabala in the initial allocations to the department presented allocations that did total that amount, $22,608,631. However, when we, there was some miscommunication to, within the division on the allocation. So to try to correct that miscommunication, the allocations were redone. We, so new allocations were given to the department. So that created some of the, some of the, um, confusion. What the department submitted, resubmitted were the base allocation amount plus their general wage adjustment from the prior year. But that was not what was included in the base allocation that came from the Executive Branch. So the, the base allocation from the Executive Branch was, like I said, $22,608,631, which represented, um, the prior year's base allocation. So it was just a miscommunication, a misinterpretation of what was asked of by the Executive Branch. It was not an error, it was just miscommunication. And if OMB is on the line, perhaps they can, um, confirm what I just stated or provide additional information? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jeremiah. Mr. Dominic Beall, are you on the call, sir?
Mr. Beall? First star six.
I am.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Beall, for taking the time to get on the call from Budget, Office of Management and Budget. Um, I don't know how much the conversation that you listened to, but are you able to respond, sir?
Well, I can give some basic information, uh, just to help everyone in their understanding on this subject matter. First of all, the, uh, Mr. Chair and members of the RDC, the, um, the job of OMB in the annual budgeting process is to review the individual budget packages, the budget forms that are submitted by the various programs, all the business units, in order to ensure accuracy and it's correct and so forth, using the proper rates and schedules and then other related cost factors. So that's, that's what we do. Now, as, um, Ms. Jeremiah, Jeremiah explained, there, it became apparent along the way that it wasn't clear exactly how the allocations were made internally to, to DNR. And so that became the, the question. And so, as Ms. Jeremiah put it, there was some confusion on the subject amongst DNR and then whatever the expectation was from the President's Office. So the President's Office as well as, uh, ENR met and arrived at some understanding of what the planning allocations were, not only for the entire division, but internally to the various programs and business units. There's, um, a number of, of, uh, business units and programs that got increases. And then the others were, uh, kept stable, meaning the same level as FY 22. But, uh, again, that's the decisions reached by management at DNR and then at the President's Office. And so again, our role is just ensuring whatever, whatever numbers are, are, are set, that everything adds up and is, is, uh, accurate and correct. Uh, Mr. Chair, that's my additional comments to, uh, this, um, subject. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beall. Let me go back to Honorable Kialan Begay. Honorable Begay, your follow-up, please?
Uh, Chairman, uh, it's very obvious that there's a taking a step back of a statement that was made earlier while other, uh, upper echelons are beginning to jump onto the call. And it's very obvious that the, uh, staff are being instructed to say certain ways. Maybe, uh, someone has to take a stand on behalf of our staff and on behalf of our program that provides direct service to our Navajo people. Yes, we get instructions from our Navajo people, but there's no direct from others to really tell us, uh, on certain things that we, that were, were, that are interested in us as a delegate. But yet, the division staff are totally being, uh, I guess maneuvered around, uh, of how the budget and, and what is the purpose? Maybe that's another area. But maybe reading the memo, uh, would, uh, provide us more information, uh, Chairman, but I still like to, uh, uh, have us further, maybe get a response from the, uh, the, uh, the Chief of Staff. And then, I mean, specifically. The appointed, uh, Division Director is not here as well. Specifically for my area, a lot of programming, even several, several years, a year, two years ago, RDC. A project in Lindiki, a lot of them deals with local programs, local chapter officials or, of great, especially grazing officials. They have to start dealing with right-of-way process. They still have to deal with a lot of these local projects, but yet we're not providing them sufficient from our end unless, unless maybe coordination with the upper office to say that the grazing officials, that though, other, any other program, because we still have to, uh, they still, any right-of-way process, uh, uh, agri, not agriculture, um, Land Department. We have a, almost a billion dollars' worth of projects that's coming down the pipe. Unless that the Opera Office, maybe Mr. Patero can provide us information to say that this is how some of the programs will be supplemented in, in, in getting this done. And maybe, maybe another thing probably is, uh, because of the one-stop shop. I'm trying to, uh, pinpoint to the, 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 the actual situation. Uh, I'm glad that staff are providing this to us. Uh, again, if they're being dictated, being told what to say and what not to say, I guess that needs to be surfaced as well. Uh, Chairman, I mean, that's my, uh, request again.
Thank you, Honorable Begay, for your concerns. Let me go to Chief of Staff, Mr. Paulson Chaco, for his response. Mr. Chaco, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Listen, I, members of the Resource and Development Committee, I didn't quite get, uh, the gist of all the discussion that happened, um, prior. Um, I'm also in other meetings right now, so, um, I did get what Dominic had mentioned, um, as, uh, as far as the allocation to divisions. Let me, let me say at this time. Um, we are not dictating what they say or not to say from the divisions. Um, you heard, apparently Jeremiah indicate what she had to say, so we're not dictating anything like that. Secondly, um, when we first started the budget allocation, we instructed, we at the OPVP instructed all divisions that they would have the same amount from last year to operate under. All the divisions, Health, all the Social Services, Division of Transportation, all of them submitted their budgets based on the 22, based on the, on 22 allocations. Division of Natural Resources got their 22 general funds allocation. That allocation is $19,958,631. So they had to develop a budget based on that amount. So they had to develop a budget based on that amount. Like, for instance, you have, um, Department of Health who have, who have needs and concerns, but they're constrained to that budget. Now, the council wishes to take money from Health and from whatever the other division, that's up to the council. But we instructed our divisions to stay within those budgets that were allocated. In addition, the President also allocated two point six million dollars on top of the, the general funds of nineteen million. And that two point six was given to Animal Control, One-Stop Shop, Energy Department, Water Resources, Fish and Wildlife Zoo, totaling two point six million. That's the instructions we gave D N R. Me, that's fairly clear and simple as to what the instructions are to the divisions. All of the divisions have met, developed the budgets and that was.
Uh, please meet your phones, Ashwara. Please meet your phones. Thank you. You may proceed, Mr. Chaco.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, again, all the divisions were, um, given the same amount from fiscal year twenty-two. Now, if D N R wishes to, to reallocate some of the nineteen million, that would be something that D N R would have to do amongst themselves as, um, departments and programs. They have to take away money from Fish and Wildlife or give money, take away money from, uh, from Land Department. But I guarantee those department directors are not going to allow that to happen. So, Honorable Begay, all the divisions were given instructions to live within what was given to them in fiscal year twenty-two. In addition, they were also instructed, if there are unmet needs, to submit those unmet needs budget. I don't know if, um, those, uh, most of the, I, I understand some of those unmet needs budget have been forwarded to our office from the Division of Natural Resources. So we'll take a look at those unmet needs budget. Now, mind you, that twenty-seven million that's, that is unallocated, that has to be split amongst the three branches. That will be up to the council as to how to, um, divvy that up. So that's where, that's at. So I hope I addressed some of the questions, um, but yes, uh, Mr. Kialan Begay mentioned, we are, we are allocating those funds according to last year's allocation from all the divisions. All the divisions were given that same instruction and all the divisions basically came back with what they could live within their budget. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Chaco, earlier, Mr. Honorable Kialan Begay had mentioned, as well as the grazing official stipends concerned. But I will go back to him and have him address that himself, as well as the legislative concerns that was mentioned, since you just barely got on the call as well. So let me go back to his follow-up and he could clear up some of his questions and concerns. Honorable Begay?
Uh, Chairman, um, uh, don't need to have any people in the defense position. We're being instructed, if you, if you hear the word, if you, if you, I mean, uh, define the word instruct, instructed. That's my interpretation. And that, and I mean, that's, I mean, that's what I, that's how I interpreted of the presentation that they're being instructed to. I don't know, have we received that, Chairman?
Uh, yes, it was sent by Mr. Tohvi.
The only one that I received, the one, only one I received is just the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three general fund budget allocation. It's exit branch table ID. That's the latest one I have.
There was a letter attached with it. It was sent at eleven-twenty.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. Uh, for some reason, we're just looking at the second page. Uh, Chairman, I'm sure other, uh, committee, committee members have a question. Can you, um, get back to me after another, uh, committee member asks questions first? Chairman?
Okay, thank you. Honorable Stewart, you have the floor.
Okay, Chairman, thank you. I run down Mr. Chaco for joining us and, um, answering some of these questions with the division directors. Also, the division directors for being patient with us throughout this whole time and, um, answering our questions and making changes to the budgets as well. But with this budget, you know, that goes across the board, do the, um, requests from the personnel under executive last, to not change, as there are things that are not changed within the budget. And then to move forward with what has already been used to keep the positions. The response was, no, there are no changes. And we, we hear it every time we meet with a division, a program, the pay rate isn't there. Are the President's views on those? To cut them again in their pay? You know, where are those funds going to come from, to, to, to meet those, to keep them there as well? And to make sure that they, they continue to get the stipends that they are supposed to be allocated without any receiving any cuts? Because they do a lot of the, um, hands-on out there with our ranchers, our livestock owners, and they, they move in that direction. And so I want to, to ask those questions too. How can we, again, as resource development, how can we look at the, um, cuts? Because this, I, in reading the, these legislations, the headings, it's between us and budget and finance to go through. That's only going to be how many delegates out of twenty-four that will get to hear these budgets? And how many of the employees are going to go to other delegates to hear those concerns? And those concerns, we're not even going to hear. I brought up some questions as well to Water Resource Director last week too, as far as vehicles go and the equipment goes. What's the reason to have all that equipment and the vehicles if they're not going to be used? And then why is it that upper management can give themselves increases? But yet, the employees out there, the staff out there cannot even get those same treatment? With this budget here in our hands right now, Chairman, Vice Chair, although, you know, I am a co-signer, you know, I want to make sure, I stated that before last week, make sure that we hear the departments and the divisions, the employees, that feel confident in letting us know as delegates that we will share those same, um, voices with them and share their concerns with our other community mem, with our other committee members. And so, you know, I think if we look at that again, you know, and see where these are coming from and see what other areas besides not promising their pay or, um, or other cuts can be made? Because right now, we say we want the staff back. And we, yet, we, we have all these vacancies open. Or does it go back to even reevaluating the directors that have a high number of man supervisory positions open? Where are their, um, job performance rates at? I mean, I'm sure President and Vice President are aware of these. We have even written them up in our concerns. There's a policies manual to follow. That doesn't restrict, it's not restricted to division directors or program managers or supervisors as well. They are just as well as an Navajo employee as their other employee. Yet, for some reason, these division, um, some of these division directors, including H R, seem like they can bend these rules to benefit them. And to me, that's not right, Chairman. I want to say that in this committee so that we can really look at these budgets, see, work with our managers that we know of that are, and tell us this is where we're being cut. Because Shana is right, you know, there, there are employees out there that have been with the divisions and programs for X number of years, yet haven't even gone to the end of their pay scale. Some of them, they've been at the pay, same pay rate for X number of years. And then yet, within four years, we have division directors or we have some program managers making how much money? And this is again, like I said, you know, this is only going between two committees, us and Budget Finance. Because I can say that I've gotten phone calls, I've gotten text messages from others that don't even fall under our divisions, yet are trying to assist them as well. They may fall under law and order, you know, they fall under Budget Finance, they fall under H E S I. But it's because they feel confident and comfortable in telling me these things so that I can voice their concerns. They're constituent, either constituents of mine or I've known them and working through an executive bench for X number of years as well. That's why I'm trying to be as well-rounded as I can to say these things and to say, you know, it's not only this, the, this, these divisions that we oversee, but other divisions as well. And I've made those, I'm saying these same comments, I thought to H E S I, to, H E S I, to, to ask them to please look at the budgets thoroughly and help with, um, a couple of the programs out there. And I think Shana is right, we, we need to look at these again. Then we, we probably should and see what else can be, how else can we get the funding from? And where else is President going to, instead of pulling monies at the eleventh hour from staff or from pay or whatnot, you know, the lower level of the chain, where is it going to come up from the upper level? Two as well. Those are just thoughts again, um, in, in a broad range of, um, thinking that I have, Shana, Chairman, and Chief of Staff, Chaco. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart, for your concerns and statement. Uh, let me go to Chief of Staff, Paulson Chaco.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman, others and, uh, members of the Resource and Development Committee. Um, appreciate the discussion this morning regarding budgets. Um, some of the, um, most of the, what I gathered from, um, Honorable Delegate Stewart was, um, mainly remarks, I believe, toward the budget itself. But what I can say on a couple of items is, um, you are correct on some of the pay scales that, that some of the program and also some of the employees, rather than middle management, um, pay scale has, is, is one item that, uh, we need, we meeting council and the President's office needs to really take a look at, working with Dr. Fowler, to, to take a look at the pay scales on some of these positions and increase that to where they are more competitive, uh, on the outside. Uh, in addition, um, you're right, you are correct, some of these managers have to manage programs with what we have. Again, as I mentioned, most of the divisions were given the same amount from fiscal year twenty-two. And I'm not sure where, um, I've heard that there's some cuts in staff. Um, I'm not sure how that could be, how that could happen if they're given the same amount from last year. And internally, how they are given those dollars for, for, from the same amount from last year, which is nineteen million, nine fifty-eight, six thirty-one, issuing quite, that's how their own program wages are developed. So, um, Mr. Stewart. So that's, um, basically, uh, my response back. And we certainly will, uh, be working with, um, the D N R, uh, moving forward with the, actually with the department managers, some of the issues that you raised. So, um, I, um, conclude my remarks.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chaco. Another, another concern that was raised is the, um, many positions that are open as well as upper management vacancies. Is, is there a reason for, for this? If it's a personnel issue, then you don't need to speak on it. But we would like to know why there's a, a lot of vacancies as well, not only under D N R, but other departments under the divisions, uh, Mr. Chaco.
Thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there's a very, um, various reasons why some of these positions are vacant. One, as everyone probably is aware, that the time to advertise, the time to select and to actually hire someone is, takes a fairly quite amount of time. And by the time you get a qualified person, that person probably has found another job. So, secondly is the pay scale on somebody's, um, upper manager position. Some of the pay, pay wages are not competitive with the outside, um, the outside, um, with the outside of the Navajo Nation. And the list goes on as to why, but I think the person that would really, um, answer that question, um, Mr. Chair, is probably, uh, Director Fowler, Dr. Fowler, on some of these more specific questions. Take care. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chaco. Honorable Stewart, do you have a follow-up?
Chairman, not right now. Um, I think, you know, that we do need to probably, again, I guess, meet with, um, Dr. Fowler as well. Mr. Chaco again stated, you know, and see what can do to really look at these, is it across the board? Along with the other, other colleagues as well that probably have these same concerns. I'm sure Mr. Chaco and other staff are being pulled between different committees to answer similar questions. But what can we do as an overall council to make sure that these are being addressed with this year's fiscal budget? Um, to make sure that we are doing what we can for them. That's all, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Stewart. Honorable members of RDC, any other comments or questions? I'll go back to Honorable Kialan Begay Junior.
Uh, Chairman, again, in the twenty, June twenty-seventh memo, in the second paragraph, it does say, "There are funds available from the permanent fund income and this will be determined later in the budget process." Uh, could we, uh, get further explanation? Because I know uh the council uh for the next five years, almost forty million. Is that total, is that total amount being held up or a portion of it is just being held up? Uh, Chairman, if I could be able to get um a response on that particular statement?
Thank you, Honorable Begay. Mr. Chaco, the memorandum, I don't know if you have it before you, but it's dated for June twenty-seven from the Office of the President, Vice President, signed by our Honorable President Jonathan Nez. Could you expand on that um memorandum on the second paragraph?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm trying to locate that memo on my laptop here, but um, the memo basically is in reference to uh the three branch chiefs agreement. And the three branch chiefs agreement outlines how each uh branches, how much money they will receive. As I indicated earlier, uh, the executive branch received additional um dollars, which DNR received two point six million of that. The remaining money that was under the um allocation, as I indicated, there's twenty-seven million. That's in the three branch chiefs agreement, twenty-seven million that is unallocated. And the three branch chiefs were supposed to get back together on how those, how that twenty-seven million was gonna be allocated to each branch again. In preparation for that twenty-seven million, the instructions to the divisions were to prepare unmet needs budget in anticipation of using a portion of that twenty-seven million. That's up to the council on how that appropriations will be done, but we will have our recommendations from the executive branch on some of those unmet needs from the divisions. I believe um Mr. Stewart indicated uh something to the effect of raising officials. So if the division um did submit an unmet needs budget for that particular area, then uh we will move that forward to uh the budget, uh to the to the council. So hopefully I address uh your questions. Thank you. Um, and Dominic may help me a little bit uh as well. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Beal, could you explain the permanent trust income further, sir?
Yes, sir. Chairman Nez, um, as Chief of Staff Chaco has explained, I'll I'll provide a little bit more information on that. The Navo Nation Council approved resolution CAP dash thirty dash twenty-one. And that is the second five-year plan for the permanent fund income. And so that's the uh legislation where it sets aside forty million from the permanent fund income for the overall budget. So way back thirty years ago now, when this particular permanent fund was established, it was acknowledged that our revenues from natural resources, meaning gas, oil, uh minerals and so forth, were diminishing. They were being reduced. And sure enough, the um generating station at Page is one example of that in the impact on coal mining. So that was the purpose of that particular permanent fund balance is to provide funding when the uh revenues begin to diminish. So during the first five-year plan, that the the amount that was remaining after allocations were made was added to the to the general fund for purposes of helping with the budget. Now, the second five-year plan, the one that's in place now, sets the amount of forty million, so it's pretty well set. So when the controller issued the general fund revenue projection, the controller also includes the forty million from the um permanent fund income. So that's that's the source of what we're discussing here. Now additionally, the resolution that I referred to on the um second five-year plan that's currently in effect, there's a paragraph under section three. And I'll just, I won't read it word for word, but just explain it. It it refers to the permanent fund income over forty million shall be designated as excess income and shall be available to fund additional needs by Navo Nation leadership. And during the fourth quarter, during the deliberations on the annual budget, this excess fund can be can be budgeted for unmet needs and whatever whatever the uh needs and priorities are. So that's what Chief Chaco was talking about when he mentions the twenty-seven point nine million. That's the excess income over and above the forty million. Forty million is already budgeted now throughout the government, at least at least in proposed form. So the branch chiefs agreement, then again, Chief Chaco referred to, signed by all three branch chiefs. Um, they agreed to submit additional unmet needs prioritized to most likely to B and F committee. When when the B and F committee starts their their overall comprehensive budget hearings. So that the twenty-seven point nine million could be allocated to meet some of these needs. So that's where the twenty-seven point nine million enters into the budget picture. Last year, fiscal year twenty-two, the excess income above the forty million was a small amount. Was only like, if I remember right, about three million, but it wasn't significant. But this year, it's a lot more. So, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, um, 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 I hope I explained that so that it's better understood. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Beal. Uh, we do appreciate your explanation of this uh CAP thirty twenty-one as well as the how that the forty million is also set aside to provide funding when the revenue begins to diminish, and I believe that's what's been happening for a couple of years now since the closure of NGS and Kayam Mine. So thank you for that. Adalishon and die. Uh, Honorable Begay, your follow-up, sir?
Uh, Chairman, um, again, as explained by OMB, I guess the question now goes to the, I guess, the instructor, uh, possibly the OPVP office. That what what is the intent? That this this um based on the member that was sent the key. So I don't see why it's not included in the in the budget itself as we speak. But that's not being provided to us. Uh, the planning base of the prior year is the same. Uh, yes, we could have said anything. I mean, I just wanna um, to be blunt about it, I was too busy with the TV for yesterday's result. Chairman, to take a step back of some of the budget that we truly really need to provide our staff with increase. I mean, modern, up to date, current year. Other than personal laps. Included in the budget itself. Uh, Chairman, uh, again, uh, I'm I'm not sure how much time they will need if if we were to make an amendment. But for 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 now, is the uh, the Division of Natural Resources Programs. Other source of funding, maybe office controllers and OMB can specifically identify the dollars that are being uh being set aside where we as a committee can make the recommendation to OMB uh to budget finance. And then the other question is that is this across the board in every division and every program? Any clarification in making an amendment, proposal amendment? Uh, could I maybe uh somehow table it? If not, uh, maybe uh make this recommend, I believe it's it's better and more effective to do it at the committee level and then forward it as an attachment with to B and F. Uh, but again, I'm sure when it comes to the council level, I believe that this will be brought up. But yet we're still just gonna approve a budget of our staffing uh with the prior year. So it doesn't, it doesn't look right to me while there's funding just being 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 for funding just sitting sitting there, but yet we're just giving, okay. So I'd like to pinpoint in making this effort, Chairman, so uh maybe our legislative council needs to provide us a further guidance if uh for this amendment to give, Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Begay, for that. Uh, Ms. Khan?
Um, Mr. Chair and members of the Resources and Development Committee. In previous years, the Resources and Development Committee has um relied upon the exhibits which have been provided by the various divisions that the division of that the Resources and Development Committee has oversight over. The uh RDC looks at the budgets that were provided and um and makes recommendations to the Budget and Finance Committee from those particular exhibits that are provided by the division. In this case, and that is how the current resolution for um division for the um Division of Natural Resources uh legislation is written. Provide and it's using the exhibits that are provided um and worked on by the Division of Natural Resources using the monies that they were um allocated um through the President's memo. Um, now, um, if I understand correctly, um, Delegate Kialan Begay would like the Resources and Development Committee to make a recommendation with regard to um a a particular amount, and I don't know that particular amount, that is um that um from this discussion, yeah, we see that it is an amount that hasn't been allocated, and I understand from Mr. Beal's um presentation that it's twenty-seven point nine million that is not allocated at this moment. I I don't understand if that is from, I I guess that is from the all three branches of government. That would be eventually be available for all three branches of government with the executive branch being in the form of unmet needs, fund unmet needs. Um, so as I'm trying to say, that the Resources and Development Committees um fiscal year twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-one and on that budgets were only recommending to Budget and Finance Committee what was presented by their various divisions that they have oversight over and not any additional monies in addition to what was allocated by the President. Now, um, I I've not been presented with this situation before. However, I do think that there arguably is room within the authorities of the Resources and Development Committee over the the divisions it has oversight over to make a recommendation. Of course, again, this is a recommendation and it would go to the Budget and Finance Committee and it would um, it it is not a finalized approved um allocation to the divisions. It is a recommendation. And um if I do, at this point, I don't see any prohibition to this type of recommendation on these unallocated funds. Yeah, that it would need to be explained to the Budget and Finance Committee why Resources and Development Committee is making this type of recommendation. But it would be up to whichever um delegates from the Resources and Development Committee make this presentation to the Budget and Finance Committee. Um, at this point, I see no prohibition against making this type of recommendation as
Very, in that way, I think it's more, I believe it's more, uh, 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 that we were able to be successful in, in helping our program. They could all budget, uh, 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 halul ya, chochua, and then add in that, uh, legislation in the, I mean, in the, at all, so, but, yet, it's, 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 you can't even, uh, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, council, then, it's, 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 I don't need, uh, it's, 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 oversight program, yeah, and, yes, it, it, uh, 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 you recommend, uh, 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 budget, and, and, uh, 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 otherwise, we'll be, we'll be looked at as, uh, uh, at the committee level, the, uh, so, but, uh, uh, and, uh, when, uh, when, uh, when, uh, when, uh, when, uh, when, uh, and, 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 uh, especially getting up to the, uh, the Naval Nation Council. So Chairman, uh, I, again, I mean, I need that, um, I'm, I'm, I'm requesting for this particular recommendation as an amendment.
Honorable Begay, I do, and, and, I know, thank you, honorable members of the Resources and Development Committee. Now, here, yeah, they has, uh, need, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, 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 this is up to you, it's your job to make any type of amendment recommendations, to change, to make a recommend, recommendation as to how some of these, um, twenty seven point nine million could be used, or the forty million. Of course, and, here, this legislation's yours, that's why it's before us here today at Resources and Development Committee. Oh, say, it, uh, oh, say, and, uh, as you make your recommendation, you're the lawmaker, we legislate, we can do that. Honorable Begay, if you want to make an amendment, propose an amendment, let Ms. Khan know, we can take a fifteen, twenty minute break, as to what language you would like to be added into this legislation. Zero one two six dash twenty two. Uh, it, uh, it, uh, it, uh, so, we can do this, and we have all day and all night till midnight, uh, discuss these legislations that's on the agenda. And, uh, I know, thank you, do you, uh, 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 towards the fall, towards the end of the fiscal year, every year, uh, when they, uh, 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 it's up to us how we're gonna do this and move forward on it. So, at this time, um, honorable Begay, if you wish to make an amendment, uh, you're welcome to do so, as well as my colleagues, all of you, it's your legislation now, it's gonna move to Budget and Finance, and on to, uh, the whole council, they're gonna make their recommendations, they're gonna make their amendments as well. But, uh, 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 that's what we do as lawmakers, that's, that's how we come together and, and make it work, but the three branch chiefs, either, their agreement is a recommendation to us, but as lawmakers, you're the governing body, you're the one that says, let's amend this, so, honorable Begay, as the Chair of already seen, my recommendation to you, right now, is to propose an amendment, based on your concerns, and it can move forward, Ms. Khan can draft that amendment, the language for you, uh, should, uh, uh, honorable Begay.
Uh, Chairman, I do, committee member, uh, with the support, again, uh, Chairman, my, I'd like to, uh, before I make the amendment, uh, request, ask O M B to identify the recommended funding from either the, the, uh, permanent trust fund, that's gonna be, that's allocated, and the, or the personnel, uh, personnel lapse fund, and across the board, in the Division of Natural Resources, A D G, adjustment of, up to date, of the, uh, 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 salary increase, uh, 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 recommend, uh, the, uh, Chairman, that's my specific, uh, request of the adjustment for salaries, uh, uh, within the Division of Natural Resources, uh, 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 based on the language is developed with the recommendation from O M B, then our Legislative Council will, uh, draft up that amendment language for me, to make that, uh, motion for the amendment, Chairman, if I could be able to get, uh, direction from O M B and from, uh, our Legislative Council, Chairman.
Thank you, honorable Begay, let me, um, go to Mr. Dominic Biel, your response, and then I'll go to our Legislative Council, Mr. Biel.
Mr. Chair, R D C members, uh, and to, uh, Delegate Kiellan Begay. The, let me, let me start here, the legislation, the proposed legislation, that's before the committee, zero one two six dash twenty two. It includes exhibits that show the, the proposed budget amounts, as it stands, from the division. And then there's an Exhibit B, where it would show Oversight Committee's, um, budget recommendations, so that's intended to show where the, um, where the committee is recommending changes to the budget amounts. And then on Exhibit C, is a short narrative, explaining why such changes are being recommended. Exhibit D, any COAs or legislative concern. Now, there's an Exhibit E, the, a listing of the recommended unmet needs budgets. So, that's where, um, Chief Chaco and the other branches understand that this particular exhibit will be supported in part or in whole by the branch chiefs for the twenty seven point nine million. And again, in this case, what we're talking about today is R D C for D N R. So, so these pages could be completed as you go today, and then it would be captured on Exhibit E, any unmet needs. Now, the, um, Exhibits B and C deal to the planning allocation given to D N R, the twenty two point six million. So, those exhibits would show any changes within that amount, that R D C is proposing or recommending. Now Exhibit E, the unmet needs, would be any amounts above the twenty two point six already set aside as the planning allocation for D N R. So, so that's the purpose of, of some of those exhibits in your legislation. So, if R D C, based on your discussion today, reaches, or could develop a list on Exhibit E, that shows where the, um, where the, uh, funds would go, as far as recommendations from the committee, then that's where it would be documented. And then later on, beginning next week or the following week, at B N F, see, B N F, of course, will be hearing from all of the Oversight Committees, from all of the branches and all of the divisions, about unmet needs and other, other budget matters, other budget issues, and, um, then they'll make a judgment along the way, as to what they want to support. Now, they have to live within the funding available, I mean, we all do, so those are some of the constrictions, or matters that we all need to bear in mind, as we go through the budget process. Now, they'll get, Begay, further he explained about, or he was asking about, the, uh, the personal lapse savings amount, that, as of today, is not established yet. The reason it's not established yet is because this year, fiscal year twenty two, the, um, Controller's Office will run a projection, showing in the general fund personnel budgets, how much is being expended, and how much is not being expended, and using that data, they'll be able to say that fifteen million, for example, is it gonna be the unexpended balance, that in fiscal year twenty three, October first, will lapse into the personal lapse fund balance? Now that balance, the personal lapse savings, its first purpose, the reason it was intended, or, um, established in the first place, was to fund, if possible, an annual general wage adjustment, G W A, and that's comparable, or some people look at it, comparable and similar to a COLA, we used to call it COLA, cost of living adjustment, in, in, in the past. So, the branch chiefs, and, and the branch chiefs' agreement, knowing and understanding, like we all do, the price of consumer goods at any store you go to, food and goods and services, gasoline, all of that has gone up, the last figures I saw nationally, is over nine percent, the inflation rate has gone up. So, the branch chiefs recommended an amount of up to five percent, for the G W A, but that depends on the personal lapse savings balance, that's gonna be calculated here soon, probably in the next week or two. That's why there's no dollar figure set yet. So, that would be one, or the primary use, of the personal lapse savings fund, but again, it's not set yet, and it won't be, won't be forecasted or estimated, as I said, until another week or two. So, whatever that amount is, if it's five percent, and obviously, it's gonna cost X amount of dollars to fund all employee staff, so if it's four percent, let's say, or three percent, see, then it won't be as expensive, but nevertheless, it'll be a cost, but it depends on the balance that's projected, and as I'm saying right now, it's not, it's not done yet, it's not typically done until about midway through the fourth quarter, which is, um, coming up very soon. Because as we speak fiscal year twenty two, the funds are still being expended, in all of the personnel accounts, all of that has to be considered by the Controller's Office, in order to arrive at, uh, a balance they can project and, and, um, and, um, recommend. Now, the, the other thing, since I'm speaking, that, that I could, uh, mention, is, uh, I believe it was, uh, Kiellan Begay's question as well, about, on the permanent funding income, the excess, how come it's not budgeted yet? And I read a bit earlier, I know you don't have these documents in front of you, but I read earlier from the resolution, where it says, the, any income above the forty million, um, shall be available to fund additional needs during the fourth quarter of the fiscal year, in the context of deliberations on the annual budget. You see, that's why we're talking about it now. At the time, the revenue projection was issued by the Controller, at the end of the second quarter, March thirtieth, this amount is not in there, it's not known. That comes out a bit later, and from year to year, it varies in the amount, so again, I said, in this case, it's twenty seven point nine million, last year, it was about three million, so, so it varies, and that's why it's not budgeted or allocated yet, but that's coming, that's gonna happen in the next couple of weeks, particularly at B N F's, uh, committee hearings. But, the B N F is gonna listen to recommendations from the Oversight Committees, including in this case, R D C. So, Mr. Chair, committee members, uh, Delegate Begay, that's my, uh, additional information on this subject, thank you.
Thank you, very much, to Biel, I see, uh, I do, helping us to understand what you just explained to us, I see, uh, Ms. Khan, let me go to you now.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Resources and Development Committee, and also thank you, Minister Biel, for explaining that to me, um, I was, I was not, I did not know these, what you're explaining, and, um, um, it, it is helpful in advising the committee on how to, how to, um, write their resolution and approve their resolution. Um, but with regard to any amendments, um, it, as I said earlier, it is up to the delegates, whether, of the Resources and Development Committee, whether they want to, um, recommend to the Budget and Finance Committee, in this particular legislation, um, the amounts and the purposes that they, the Resources and Development Committee would, um, recommend that the, um, twenty seven point nine million be used, um, with regard to the Division of Natural Resources, and I, I am thinking this through, and it would go in a section five or six, whatever section we're on in this legislation, in which, um, the Resources and Development Committee could make their recommendation. I, um, I did not know ahead of time that the unmet needs Exhibit E was, um, specifically, um, uh, that the President's Office, the President had asked that that be his, used as, as the division's recommendation, at the request of the President, to make that recommendation, as my previous, um, um, working with the, um, comprehensive budget, uh, hearings and, and meetings, um, the, um, the unmet needs portion of Exhibit E, my understanding was, um, was something that the Oversight Committees worked with, with the, with the divisions and departments. Um, now, I'm learning that, in, at, in this year, fiscal year twenty twenty three, uh, the President had, the President of the Naval Nation has specifically asked that the divisions and departments put their unmet needs there. Um, given that information, um, I will work, at this point, I see, I can work with the, with the Resources and Development Committee for a separate section of their legislation, in which they may or may not want to make recommendations, um, in the body of the legislation, as to, as to the use of this, um, twenty seven point nine million that you have described, um, that was described by Mr. Biel. Uh, I will wait for, um, uh, um, instructions, or, or, um, suggestions by the Resources and Development Committee, for the development of, of a, an additional section to the legislation, with, to, uh, state the committee's recommendations for the expenditure of the two, twenty seven point nine million. Again, this is a recommendation to the Resources, to the Budget and Finance Committee, um, I don't know if, um, the Chair would like the, um, suggestions to come now, during the course of this meeting, or, or wait for each of the delegates to communicate with me through email separately. Mr. Chair, I leave that up to you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee, and Mr. Biel.
Thank you, Ms. Khan, um, I do have a question for you, Ms. Khan, this recommendation, uh, the recommendation, would it be a part of amendment, an amendment?
Mr. Chair, um, with regard to, um, what we are, what we are talking about, the recommendation of the committee with regard to the twenty seven point nine million, um, that would need to be an amendment to this legislation, um, or the committee can, um, uh, do a separate legislation, or, uh, perhaps get on, and, and, on the Budget and Finance Committee's agenda for a report, but there is, um, an opportunity to put it in as an amendment to this legislation, uh, in which case, I would wait for your, for your request. Um, or you could, all right, um, um, that, um, the, um, um, the other method is to put your requests, not in the body of the legislation, but into the unmet needs portion of Exhibit, that being Exhibit E. Um, and there is an, uh, Exhibit E was devised for unmet needs, and, um, your, your, the committee's, um, suggestions, individual delegate's suggestions, could be put into the unmet needs portion of Exhibit E. Uh, and I do want to bring to your attention that, um, that the Office of Legislative Council is consulting among itself here, as how best to, to provide, to, uh, make, um, the Resources and Development Committee's suggestions known to Budget and Finance Committee, and, um, with this discussion, um, that putting these recommendations into the unmet needs, um, might be the, um, uh, most efficient way to do this. Uh, I, I, we can add them to the unmet needs section, uh, it is, that would be a, uh, efficient way to do it, Mr. Chair, and that is, um, what I have to offer at this moment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Khan, let me go back to honorable Kiellan Begay Junior, what would you like to do, and, uh?
Uh, Chairman, um, to discuss, I just sent, uh, amendment language request, job, um, I, I, I think the committee, we, the committee, uh, will need to make a statement in, on the unmet need, uh, or, again, with the recommendation from, uh, Legislative Council, uh, in which area, that there needs to be known, that, uh, Division of Natural Resources will, uh, or, of any funding to be allocated, uh, that, the, the, the general wage adjustment, though personnel, uh, for personnel, um, could, uh, 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 based on the factors of inflation and others, uh, 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 but I just, uh, I don't know if, um, if that's a correct, uh, language, uh, that I made recommendations, uh, Chairman, so that would be my first amendment, in the unmet needs, to the unmet need form.
Okay, um, thank you, honorable Begay, let me, uh, go to Ms. Charamaya, and I'm gonna give her some time, so she can speak on the personnel lapse fund as well, and then we would kind of know how to approach this and put it all together, Ms. Charamaya, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, honorable Chairman, is, I would like to add some comments about the personal lapse fund, and how it is not considered, um, how the personnel that is budgeted, for example, FY twenty twenty three, why the personnel lapse fund that's estimated on FY twenty twenty two does not work, or how it may negatively affect your budget for FY twenty twenty three, it, your personnel lapse fund can only be used for personnel, so your FY twenty two, personal lapse fund amount is carried over to be used for your FY twenty twenty three, but what's not taken into consideration are, um, personals, personnel, um, step increases, I'm sorry, performance-based step increases, and also, when you have new positions that were budgeted at the step A, but you would like to, to come in at a B or a C with D P M's approval, because they, because, first of all, the salaries are too low, uh, and another reason is because their experience is such that they deserve to come in at higher than entry level, so when you have those performance-based step increases given in FY twenty twenty two, and you have new positions that came in at a step higher than the entry level, your personal lapse fund will not cover that, so right there, there's always, already a deficit, that's one of the reasons why, um, we have to, uh, use our operational expenses to cover that in FY twenty twenty three, for example, that is some, that's another reason why, after, year after year after year of this happening, you finally have no more budget in your operations to cover that deficit that just has been a snowballing effect in your personnel, so you eventually have to, you have to, um, get rid of a bud, um, position, uh, that's how that happens. And, let's see, um, to address honorable Begay's question about how we could do this and revise Exhibit E, is, the easiest way is to use the amount, the personal lapse fund that was allocated for FY twenty twenty two, which wasn't considered in our base allocation, we didn't get that, we'll get that back, and that amount is, we'll have to double check this, but it is we'll get that back, and that amount is, we'll have to double check this, but it is three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Uh, one other thing that I just recalled that, back to the Personnel Laps Fund, why it won't, the current process doesn't work, why it doesn't cover, um, for example FY 2023, is just what Dominic had said earlier, that the, there will be a budget for what's the balance in the Personal Laps Fund. And whatever that is, it could be up to five percent. But what was covered last year was three percent. So that's already in employees' wages, that three percent. And if we get a five percent, the Personal Laps Fund that was allocated for 2023 is not gonna cover five percent. And then we're digging into our, outside of our personnel again, into our operational budget. So, so those are the reasons why I just wanted to, we've nev, nobody really touched upon that, and I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. The reason why it, even though we were given the same amount from last year, why sometimes, why that's not enough? And why it has a snowball effect year after year after year, where we get to this point where we are, um, we have to lose positions? Why we, why we don't have enough funds to operate effectively? Thank you, Chairman Ez.
Thank you, Ms. Charamaya, uh, for that. And also, um, Ms. Con, I'm, I'm beginning to have some concerns here because, um, we went through legislations for the programs that were the oversight over. And we're here with, uh, Division of Natural Resources legislation before us, and the recommendation and the amendment that is being made, Ms. Con, should something similar like, like this amendment, that, should it have been approved within the other programs as well that were the oversight over? Or the concern is the general wage adjustment, uh, Ms. Con?
Mr. Chair, of course, that would be, would have been preferable. Um, I, um, those particular legislation, the resolution, there is now going to be a resolution and voted upon by the Resources and Development Committee with regard to the recommendation of the other programs and divisions RDC has oversight over. Um, the, um, those resolutions have been completed. And in order to make, uh, make, um, changes to those resolutions, like any other resolution that the Resources and Development Committee passes, any amendment would be done through legislation in the five-day comment period, and, and you, you all understand that usual process. We, of course, do not have a, uh, the five days to use at this point, given the scheduling of the budget season. Um, so we are, I, we can't make, I, I don't see, there is not enough time for the budget, for the Resources and Development Committee to make an amendment to the legislation, which it is, has recommended to Budget and Finance Committee. And, um, at, at this point, um, uh, let me think, um.
Uh, the reason I'm asking this question, Ms. Con, is inflation affects all the Navajo Nation employees and everybody else on the nation working under the Navajo Nation government. That's why I was, uh, I thought about this, and I just needed your, we just needed your advisement.
Okay, yes, I, I understand that across the board you would want to say the same statement with regard to all employee, um, and positions you, um, that the RDC has oversight over. But, um, at this point, those other legislation have been voted upon by the RDC. My suggestion is, um, at this point, is to, in this particular legislation, to put in, um, the unmet need of, needing of increasing, of, of allowing for and funding inflation for, with the general wage adjustment. The other, with regard to the other programs and, and divisions that RDC has oversight over, um, as you know, the next step in this process is for the Resources and Development Committee, yourself as chair and any other members of the committee. When this, when your legislation for the Navajo Nation EPA, the Navajo Nation, um, Community, uh, Division of Community Development and, um, the, and the Division of Transportation and, and the other, uh, the other divisions whose legislation you have, um, voted upon already. When those legislation are presented to the Budget and Finance Committee, yourself and other members of this Resources and Development Committee present that to Budget and Finance Committee, I would suggest at this point that this is when RDC verbally, um, um, presents the unmet need of funding, um, the funding to increase, uh, this, the wages to bring them to account for inflation. Uh, that's my suggestion with regard to the other Resources and Development Committee oversight of fiscal year 2023 budgets that are being recommended to B and F. And that is for you, yourself, and other members of the committee to verbally make that recommendation. And, um, that, um, and would point to what is in, what will be amended through the budget, uh, your, your amendment to the Division of Natural Resources. At this point, it would be, exceed the time limit to do it through an amendment of those legislation that have already been voted on today. It is my recommendation that you verbally provide that recommendation to the Budget Finance Committee when you present to them in the next stage of this, um, of the budget process, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, thank you for that, Ms. Con. We trust as our attorney that we could, um, get advisement from you legally and how to approach it to pretty much help everyone, everyone else across the board. Because, uh, if we could just also make a recommendation and then just have this onto the committee report, Ms. Con, and let's say the general wage adjustment, our recommendation is to put it at nine point one percent to help offset the inflation for all, all Navajo Nation employees, uh, as well as everyone under the, within the government, not just employees. So, uh, Ms. Con, could, could, could it just be in that form? Or would it be best to have an amendment to language produced to state such language? Uh, enhance the legislation, Ms. Con?
Mr. Chair, um, um, again, just to bring to your attention, um, the Office of Legislative Council staff attorneys is communicating with each other as to the questions, very, very, very important questions that are being raised by, by the Resources and Development Committee. And, um, the, the, my understanding, and perhaps Mr. Um, Biel could, could expound on this, um, the general wage adjustment, uh, whether or not the general wage adjustment as it stands will, um, will account for inflation at the amount that, that, that you are suggesting, Mr. Chair, the nine percent amount. And, um, the, um, perhaps that then in the legislation that we are currently on, um, in the unmet needs, the, the amount that you would like to insert, uh, the nine percent could be, um, added there as a recommendation. Again, I would ask, um, Mr. Biel's assistance in explaining how much, uh, the general wage adjustment will be, um, raised. And i- if, um, and, uh, that would be my suggestion, and we would put that into, any access into the unmet needs Exhibit E beyond what, um, Mr. Biel, um, states. Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Con. Thank you, Ms. Con. Um, before I go to Mr. Biel, let me go back to Honorable Kialan Begay Jr., his, uh, recommendation for an amendment, and he did, uh, email us, and therefore, uh, said, "Honorable Begay, [speaking Navajo] [speaking Navajo] [speaking Navajo] [speaking Navajo] [speaking Navajo] [speaking Navajo] We can have that written in the committee report as well. Uh, [speaking Navajo]. You're, you're pretty much the sponsor of proposing, uh, an amendment and a, a recommendation, uh, Honorable Begay, [speaking Navajo].
Uh, [coughs] Chairman, uh, [inaudible]. Um, Joe, maybe, uh, maybe we can recall the vote in the previous legislations that we, uh, approved, uh, to make similar, uh, uh, amendment in each of these, uh, of the legislation. Uh, [speaking Navajo] across the board. Uh, [speaking Navajo]. I believe that this particular amendment language, uh, recommendation to the Budget and Finance needs to be embedded in each of the legislation. [speaking Navajo] But to the, the specific, the specific for Division of Natural Resource, uh, again, this is a ver, this is a direct service regarding our land, the water, animals, and everything else. [speaking Navajo] [speaking Navajo] Uh, again, uh, I, I like, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm recommending that the language are embedded in each legislation of what we plan on doing. And then, of course, [inaudible] and the, uh, maybe, uh, as an overall, I mean, if we have already approved the previous legislations with, without, without these language, then maybe have the Budget and Finance Committee make those recommendation as well. [speaking Navajo] as an overall comprehensive for the Navajo Nation, which is, I'll, I'll support that, oh. I mean, that, that, that's what we, we, that's what we would need. But to the specific, I mean, even to, to the extent of, uh, salary increase, I mean, the adjustment, [speaking Navajo] I mean, just, just because the inflation, again, that's more of the expense, eh, that fluctuates on a yearly base. But comparing to the, [coughs] comparing the, the salaries that we provide, uh, to our Navajo employees, I mean, is that adequate across the board, uh, at other area or other location? [speaking Navajo] One, one prime example, uh, is that we, they don't have housing, uh, available, employee housing. [speaking Navajo] So a lot of our, uh, staff have to travel back and forth, uh, to work for, uh, with the high price of gasoline to, uh, uh, but basically, [speaking Navajo] every single day for five, uh, five days a week, uh, twice a day. [speaking Navajo] But yet, the salary and the, uh, adjustment [speaking Navajo] is not adequate for them. [speaking Navajo] Uh, [speaking Navajo]. Like for me, I mean, I'm, I'm making the recommendation, then it is up to the committee, uh, for their action on the, uh, as, as a vote, for them to say, yeah, it's, uh, it's better this way of the amendment. Uh, if not, [speaking Navajo] but I'll, I'll stand on my recommended, uh, to make the amendment with the, uh, uh, language developed by our Legislative Council, Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Begay. But let me go to Ms. Con, and I would like to hear her advisement on your recommendation to recall the votes, to make similar amendments to each of these legislations that were the oversight over these programs that we just approved this morning. Um, Ms. Con, if we were to do that, how would we recall the votes? That'll be, be, before you answer that, also, uh, Honorable Begay, uh, this, these legislations will pretty much go to the full Navajo Nation Council. It'll go to [inaudible]. Um, but today, we can focus on this one here, DNR, since the rest were already voted on. Oh, [inaudible], and then I'll come back to you, Ms. Con, my question, please.
Mr. Chair, and members of the Resources and Development Committee, the, the ability to recall legislation, uh, is not in the current standing committee rules. The ability to recall legislation, what, um, in previous years had been within the authority of the Navajo Nation Council. Um, the Navajo Nation Council, um, a few years back, I do not remember the year, I don't remember the year, but not, not a whole, about five years ago, let's say, um, removed the ability to recall legislation. Um, and there, and at that point, there was a per, per, particular provision within, I believe it was the rules, the commit, the, the council's rules that allowed for recall, that was specifically removed through legislation, through amendment of the council's rules. The standing committees did not have a similar recall provision within their, um, the standing committee's rules of order. And, um, therefore, uh, there was, there was not a similar removal of the ability to recall legislation. Currently, there is no, no rule addressing recall of legislation voted upon, resolutions by the standing committees. Um, given that, 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 that the council as a whole removed it from its own rules, I, I'm using that as a, a guide to say, and in fact, there was never ability written in the standing committees for that ability. I would advise that, that, um, without a third, for, without being given further time to research, but just my own recollection from being here at the Office of Legislative Council for a few years. Um, the standing committees did not have that rule, and the council had that rule and chose to remove it. So my, my advice at this point is, the standing committee cannot, um, recall legislation. Mr. Chair, I would advise that at this point.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Con. Uh, I will go to, uh, Mr. Dominic Biel to help assist us on these recommendations and amendment to have some of this language, um, provided onto this legislation before us. Mr. Biel?
Mr. Chair.
Committee members.
Mister Bial?
Mister Chair, committee members. The, um, as I understand it, the, the discussion by, um, the committee so far.
The, uh, discussion by the committee so far appears to me to be how to document in the legislation, the concerns about unmet needs and could even include the, the cost of inflation. So earlier I went through the, the, um, or I explained the various exhibits and why they're there, why their, um, exhibits A, B, C, D, E are all done in uniform fashion. And that's because when BNF comes into session next week or the following week, they'll be hearing from all of the oversight committees as well as the divisions about their budget, needs and requests and so on and so forth. So that's why the all the documentation is, is uniform. So to me, the appropriate document to use therefore is a, is exhibit E. And, um, earlier, earlier when I spoke, um, I wasn't aware that an amended exhibit, set of exhibits has already been given to the committee. And, um, the, the, the copy I have has exhibit E, recommended unmet needs budgets. And there appears to be eleven business units that are mentioned. Where, where there's a recommended unmet, um, excuse me, where there's a recommended unmet need amount in a total of five point three million dollars. So that's the actual dollar recommendations that would be submitted and there, and thereafter considered by BNF Committee during the next phase, the next step of the budget process. Now, if the committee wants to recommend a certain percentage of AGWA, um, I would leave it up to the Legislative Council to determine where best to show that. But it conceivably to me, it could be in, um, it could be listed there under exhibit E as well. Uh, Mister Chair, that's, um, my remarks at this point, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mister Bial, Ms. Khan, your responses, we do appreciate it. Honorable Members of RDC, [speaking Spanish]. Let me go back to Honorable Begay and see what, how he would like to approach this. Honorable Begay?
Uh, Chairman, uh, again, uh, with the recommendation, the language, uh, defer the development to the Legislative Council, [speaking Spanish], Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Begay. Uh, Ms. Khan? I believe the email sent from Honorable Kialan Begay for his request on this particular legislation as an amendment language, if you could prepare that language for us, we would appreciate it.
Mister Chair, yes, um, I am getting the assistance of my, assistance of one of my colleagues and we are both working on that particular, um, language and it should be re- ready shortly. Um, with the idea that this language would go into exhibit E. And at this point, our office does not have the template or the, um, um, the, or maybe we do, of the, um, exhibit E that was filled in by the Division of Natural Resources. And so what we are thinking is we will provide the language with a direction that this language be inserted into exhibit E. If you will give us a, um, a five minutes, Mister Chair.
Uh, Ms. Khan, yes, five, ten minutes is fine, but what we will do is we will go ahead and have, um, uh, complete the discussion or we can entertain the Amendment One language that was sent to us and then we'll come back to Honorable Begay's Amendment Two language. We can do that at this time, so you don't need to rush through. Just, uh, take your time in drafting the language that Honorable Begay is requesting for this particular legislation. So we'll, we'll go ahead and, um, continue our meeting and then go to Amendment One first. [speaking Spanish]. Honorable Members of RDC, do you have any comments or questions on the legislation? If not, we can go and entertain Amendment One language that was sent to us that Mister Tahi had read partially. I hear none, so, um, let me go back to the Amendment One language that was sent to us. Mister Tahi, if you would, um, read that amendment language for us and then we'll have a motion in a second. Bye.
The chair members of the Resource and Development Committee, this is amendment number one for legislation zero one two six dash two two, the fiscal year twenty twenty three. Navajo Division of Natural Resources. If you recall, I left off on C on line one, uh, on page two, line twenty four. Add section four as follows, D. The Resource and Development Committee recalls, recommends the carryover of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty-one fifty for unexpended balances for the AGR Major Irrigation Farm Boards Department. Number eleven five zero zero seven. E, the Resource and Development Committee recommends the carryover of thirty-five thousand for unexpended balance for the Navajo Nation Museum. G F slash P F, number fifteen fifty seventeen. F, the Resource and Development Committee recommends the carryover of four hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-four and sixty-four cents for unexpended balances for DFW Animal Control Program, number fifteen eleven five zero twenty-six. G, the Resource and Development Committee recommends the carryover of five hundred eleven thousand, two hundred thirty-seven and ninety-one for the unex- unattended balance for the Department of Resources Enforcement, number eleven five zero two seven. H, the Resource and Development Committee recommends the carryover of one hundred eighty-one thousand, eight five eight for unexpended balances for the Fish and Wildlife Animal Control, number eleven five zero four two. One, on page two, line fifty two, twenty-five, insert a new section five as follows. Section five, recommending to the Budget and Finance Committee, the waiver of sixteen NNC subsection one, two oh five and two oh seven. A, the Resource and Development Committee to the Budget and Finance Committee, the waiver of sixteen NNC subsections one, two oh five and two oh seven be placed in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two comprehensive budget legislation. B, the Resource and Development Committee recommends to the Budget and Finance Committee, the waiver of the purpose of the Land Acquisition Trust Fund such as additional expenses, including operating expenses in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred forty-seven for business unit. Forty-one five zero zero zero. Navajo Land Department Land Acquisition Trust Fund be expend- expended from the Land Acquisition Trust Fund as follows. A, two zero zero one series, all except senior apprise- appraiser. One hundred and four thousand, nine thirty-five. B, three thousand series travel expenses, thirteen thousand, eight hundred thirty-four. C, four thousand series supplies, four thousand, four hundred and fifty. D, the five, five five zero zero series, communication and utilities, ten thousand, one hundred and seventy-six. E, six thousand series repairs and maintenance, five hundred. F, six five zero zero series contractual service, twenty-two thousand and forty. G, seven thousand series, special transactions, three thousand, five hundred and twelve. H, total, one hundred, one hundred fifty-nine thousand, four hundred forty-seven. Two, page, line two, line twenty-six, insert section six as follows. Section six, directing the Navajo Land Department to develop proposed amendments to the Navajo Land Acquisition Trust Fund. The Resource and Development Committee hereby directs the Navajo Land Department to work with the Navajo Department of Justice to develop proposed amendments to the Navajo Land Acquisition Trust Fund statutes to include expenditures for op- operational expenses and other expenses that the Navajo Land Department determines as necessary to the purchase and deposition of land for the Navajo Nation. Two, exchange exhibit A, B, and E currently attached in legislation zero one two six dash two two and replace with attach, attach new exhibit A, B, E as contained in email sent by Division of Natural Resources on Monday, August first, two thousand twenty-two at five fifty-four P M. Three, renumber reletter succeeding paragraphs or sections accordingly if necessary. And this amendment shall supersede inconsistent language contained in any other committee amendments which shall be conformed to the intent or language of this amendment. The Office of Legislative Service with notices to the sponsor of the legislation is hereby authorized to make any necess- to make necessary graphical changes. Chair members of RDC, that is amendment number one read into the record. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mister Tahi, for reading the Amendment One language into the record. At this time, Honorable Members of RDC, let's have a motion in a second. Committee. Chairman, committee members, yes, can you hear me? Yes. Thomas Walker. Chairman, I. Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker for the motion, zero second. Freeland? Honorable Freeland, thank you. And, uh, do you have any comments or questions?
Chairman, I do.
Honorable Stewart, go ahead.
Okay, um, just for clarification, I got busy there for a little bit. But this amendment, this will be across the board for all the ones that we are oversight to, including others under the Navajo Nation umbrella, correct?
Uh, Honorable Stewart, this legislation, the amendment had, was sent by Ms. Khan. We haven't got to Amendment Two for Kia Allen's amendment, which will cover all across the board.
Okay, Chairman, I have it on the speaker, that's why. All right, yes, no other questions, thank you.
All right, thank you. Honorable Members of RDC, any other comments or questions?
Mister Chair, this is, um, Mariana Khan.
Yes, Ms. Khan, go ahead.
Uh, just to, um, reiterate that the language with regard to the, um, uh, Land Acquisition Trust Fund, the waiver of, um, title, sixteen provisions of the Land Acquisition Trust Fund were put in last year's fiscal year twenty twenty-two RDC recommending legislation. And that is because, if you will recall, the Land Acquisition Trust Fund essentially, um, does not provide for the expenditure of their funds except for purchase or disposal of Navajo lands and also for a particular type of appraiser. Um, any other expenditures from that fund or, uh, as the Land Department wants to use that fund are not in the purposes of the Land Acquisition Trust Fund. And that is the reason that the waiver language is provided. That is to provide for, um, those listed items that the Land Department would like to use those funds for, um, which again are not provided for the purpose of the Land Acquisition Trust Fund. Last year, we provided the same type of language for a waiver so that that Land Acquisition Trust Fund could be used for these particular reasons that are listed in the, in the amendment. And that is, I, I, I might be overstating the point, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention and, um, so that you will know why that language is there and the need to put in the waiver language. This language would then go all the way to the comprehensive budget because it, it will, will be requesting a waiver of Navajo Nation law with regard to this particular fund, the Land Acquisition Trust Fund. Mister Chair, I present that for your information, um, before you approve or disapprove this amendment, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Khan, for making some clarifications on this amendment that is before us, under Land Department, the Land Acquisition, Acquisition Trust Funds as follows. Honorable Members of RDC, do you have any comments or questions?
Chairman, this is OMB.
Okay, uh, please identify yourself from OMB.
Good afternoon, Chairman, as and members of the RDC Committee, this is Darlene Sam, Senior Budget Analyst at OMB.
Darlene Sam, you have the floor.
Okay, I just had a question on the Land Acquisition Trust Fund. The amendment, will the committee be able to share that information so I can verify the information? The dollar amounts that were read? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sam, for your question. Um, Ms. Khan, may, may you respond to that?
Mister Chair, members of the committee and Ms. Sam, I am sorry that you do not, you were not given this information prior to today's meeting. My assumption was that, that, um, Office of Management and Budget was provided this information. I will, um, forward that amendment to you right now so that you may view it.
Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Khan. Yes, Mister Tahi?
The chair members of RDC, I did send that amendment language over to Ms. Sam so that way she Ms. Sam so that way she can verify the business unit number. That Ms. Khan, um, drafted the amendment number one for. I'm not sure if Ms. Sam has received it yet. But it was sent to her.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sam, did you receive it?
Chairman, I just received Rodney's email. I'll review it. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable members of R D C. Any comments or questions on amendment one? On twice? On three times. We'll go ahead and put it to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman.
Yes.
The chairman, could, could we please hold on the vote until Ms. Sam verifies the business unit number? So this way it doesn't require another amendment to make those changes. To the section that is outlined. In Mrs. Khan's. Um, amendment to legislation zero, one, two, six. To make sure that the business unit number that's verified is four, one, five, zero, zero, zero. Thank you, chairman, back to you.
Yes, we'll do that, um. How much time do we need, Ms. Sam? Honorable members of R D C, we'll take a little break until, um, O M B responds.
This is Daniel.
Honorable Daniels.
Um, yeah, can we take a, a ten minute break?
Uh, that's a really good idea. Honorable Daniels. Why don't we take a fifteen minute recess so you can grab some lunch and. Get it ready and then we'll get started again in fifteen minutes. We'll come back at one forty. And, uh, let's recess, it's now one twenty five. Fifteen minutes will be one forty. So we'll come back at one forty, but then also amendment two language should be ready. So thank you for that, Honorable Daniel. If you have, let's, let's take the recess for fifteen minutes. Thank you. Honorable members of R D C. It's one forty, we will go ahead and resume. Our committee meeting. Mister Tye, could you do the roll call, please?
The chair members of the resource development committee. This is roll call. For the resource and development committees. Regular meeting for Wednesday, August third, two thousand twenty two. Roll call, Honorable Ricky Nez.
That will get Rick Nez as president.
Honorable Rick Nez is present. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. Honorable Key Allen McGate, Jr. Honorable Key Allen McGate, Jr. Honorable Herman M. Daniels. Honorable Herman M. Daniels. Honorable Mark A. Freeland.
I'm here.
Honorable Mark A. Freeland is present. Honorable Mark A. Freeland is present. Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Jr.
Present.
Honorable Wilson C. Stewart, Jr. is present. Honorable Thomas Walker, Jr. Honorable Key Allen B. Gate, Jr. Honorable Herman M. Daniels.
Thank you.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels present. Chair, you have four members available who has constituted the quorum for your leader, for your regular meeting. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Tahie, if there isn't, we'll call him back in. At this time, I believe, Ms. Sam, did you read the information that was sent to you?
Chairman K. Allen's here.
Thank you, Honorable Gay. Ms. Sam from OMB, are you on the call?
Here is Dominic Biel. Ms. Sam is running the figures right now. She'll be able to get on the line again momentarily, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Biel. We'll just wait here. Mr. Tahie, do you have anything for us?
Chair members of the Resource and Development Committee, I have no new information to provide, but on a different note, I did email the entire Resource and Development Committee for our travel up to Will Springs Ranch. If the committee could reply, as I included, the Department of Fish and Wildlife to the email as well. Back to you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Chairman Nez, this is OMB.
OMB, is this Ms. Sam?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Do you have any questions on the information that was sent to you?
Chairman Nez and members of the committee, I received the amendment from Rodney, and then I received the worksheet from Mariana Khan. And the numbers are good to go as outlined in the amendment language. And I was having Ms. Holgate, the DNR budget liaison, also verify it. So that's where it's at, Chairman Nez.
So Ms. Sam, are you good with it now? Are you good? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. We're good to go then. Thank you very much, Ms. Sam, for for your participation, your concerns. We as lawmakers do need to do things correctly and right and make sure that these documents are in order. And that's why we have our attorney with us to assist us with that, also our advisor. So thank you, Ms. Sam and Mr. Biel. Achee kodo shenanta. The numbers have been verified by OMB, and everything's fine on Amendment One. Shenanta, do you have any comments or questions? On twice. On three times, we'll go ahead and vote on Amendment One. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote Green.
Thank you, Vice Chair Walker. Honorable Gay.
Chairman K. Allen, which is great.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels.
What is?
Thank you. Honorable Freeland.
I vote Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart. Honorable Stewart. Fresh start six to unmet. Honorable Stewart, three times. We have a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries on Amendment One. Ado. Honorable Stewart, is that you?
The chairman is, that is Honorable Stewart. I believe he's having technical difficulties with his Zoom connection.
Honorable Stewart, you're more than welcome to text in your vote. Ms. Khan. Are you progressing on the amendment language for number two, Honorable Gay's request?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, there are three amendment, amendments to be added to the unmet needs, and I'm just double checking here. And it should be out shortly, Mr. Chair. That would be for Amendment Two.
Honorable members of RDC, while we're waiting, we're back to the main motion while the Amendment Two language is being completed. Do you have any comments or questions on this legislation for Division of Natural Resources?
The chairman.
Mr. Tahie.
Chairman, on Amendment Number One, you did indicate to Delegate Stewart to text in his vote. He hasn't responded back to my text message as well. I wondered if he responded back to your text message so we can get the final vote for Amendment Number One.
Honorable Stewart, are you back on the call?
The chairman is, Honorable Stewart is not on the call. I believe he was knocked offline.
Okay. Honorable Freeland, are you on the call?
I'm here, Chairman.
Okay, just stand by because you're one of the co-sponsor in case Honorable Stewart doesn't get back on the call. He's having technical difficulties at this time.
Okay, Chairman.
Honorable members of RDC, since Honorable Freeland is the co-sponsor of this legislation as well, do you have any comments or questions? Okay, we'll just wait on the amendment language to be sent to oversight, and then we'll have it written to the record. Ms. Khan, about how much time do you need?
Mr. Chair, I'm just, I've just put everything into the email, and I'm just checking to make sure it goes to the appropriate people. And I am just about ready to press send. These are three amendments, and I will send now. Hopefully you have received it.
Honorable members of the Resources and Development Committee, Ms. Khan did send out the amendment language. Let me know if you haven't received it. Mr. Tahie, are we ready?
Chairman, as members of RDC, I did receive Ms. Khan's amendment. Just one quick question before we proceed. On Amendment Number One, Delegate Stewart has not texted or called in his vote. And we left a vote with you asking him to provide that information. We need the final vote before we begin.
Okay. Honorable Stewart.
Chairman Delegate Stewart is not back online.
He's not?
The chair, he is not.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and have the final vote to Amendment One as four in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries on that. Mr. Tahie for the record. And we do have Honorable Freeland on the call as the co-sponsor that could just stand by, and he could take over for that portion of the main motion. So at this time, Mr. Tahie, if you would, please read the amendment language into the record.
The chair members of RDC, this is Amendment Number Two to Legislation Number Zero Two, Zero One Two Six Dash Two Two. A. The Resource and Development Committee has reviewed and approved a, approved a proposed additional appropriation for unmet needs for general wage adjustments for all Navaf Nation government employees based on the current inflation rate. Therefore, the new appropriation must be added to Exhibit E as shown below. In Exhibit E, recommend unmet needs budgets at the following to Row One, Column One, all Navaf Nation employees, including DNR employees. Column Two, general wage adjustment to increase the GWA to account for inflation. Column Three, dollar amount to be calculated by Division of Natural Resources with the assistance of the Office of Management Budget and Office of the Controller. Column Four, DNR, OOC, and OMB will calculate the dollar amount of unmet needs for the general, for the GWA. B. The Resource and Development Committee has reviewed and approved the proposed additional appropriation for unmet needs for the Department of Agriculture for an increase to the chapter grazing official mileage cost. Increase her from the current reimbursement amount of two hundred per month. Therefore, the new appropriation must be added to Exhibit E as shown below. In Exhibit E, recommend unmet needs budget at the following to Row One, Column One, One One Zero Zero. Obstinate that. Column One, One One Five Zero Zero Two. Column Two, AGR District Grazing Committee. Column Three, dollar amount to be calculated by Department Column Three, dollar amount to be calculated by Department of Agriculture. Column Four, current amount of two hundred per month for grazing official is insignificant. So the Department of Agriculture will calculate the dollar amount of increased need for these monthly reimbursements. C, the Resource and Development Committee has reviewed and approved a proposed additional appropriation for unmet needs for the Department of Agriculture to address needed improvements to existing irrigation infrastructure and idle farmlands. Therefore, the new appropriation must be added to Exhibit E as shown below. In Exhibit E, recommend unmet needs budget at the following two Row One. Column One, One One Five Zero Zero Seven. Column Two, AGR Major Irrigation Farmer Boards. Three, column three, dollar amount to be calculated by, by Department of Agriculture. Column Four, Department of Agriculture will calculate the dollar amount of unmet needs for the improvement of existing irrigation infrastructure and idle farmlands. D, remember or reletter succeeding paragraph section of the exhibit as necessary and appropriate. The Office of Legislative Service and Office of Legislative Counsel are authorized to make technical edits to this legislation and its exhibits, including revised dollar figures to implement the committee's intent. This amendment supersedes inconsistent language and figures than any other amendments which shall be conform to this amendment. Chair members of RDC, that is Amendment Number Two read into the record. Back to you Chairman.
Thank you for reading Amendment Two in for the record, Mr. Tahie.
Mr. Chair.
Honorable members of RDC, yes, Ms. Khan?
I, I see that I need to make a very minor correction. May I proceed to point that out and Mr. Tahie could make that correction?
Yes, Ms. Khan, please do so. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. The Paragraph A, it says to make in Exhibit E, recommended unmet needs budget add the following to Row One. That's correct. Next Paragraph B, and again the same language, in Exhibit E, recommended unmet needs budget, add the following to Row Two, so that they're sequential. And then Paragraph C, in Exhibit E, recommended unmet needs budget add the following to Row Three. I hope that is understood and the idea is to make these sequential in Exhibit E, putting them at the top of Exhibit E, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Mr. Tahie?
The Chair members of RDC, I did make those notes, those technical amendments that need to be added to A, B, and C to include Row One, Row Two, and Row Three as they are in substantial order per Mrs. Khan's advice. Back to you Chairman.
Okay, good. Thank you for pointing that out to us. Honorable members of RDC, before we make a motion here, Honorable Stewart did text in his vote. So before any motions are made, we can still count his vote as green. So the vote changes from four to five in favor, zero opposed, Chair not voting on Amendment One. Thank you for texting in your vote, Honorable Stewart. I hope that you could rejoin us as soon as you possibly can. Now, after Mr. Tahie read into the record Amendment Two, there were a few minor corrections made to the amendment as pointed out by Ms. Khan as well as verified by Mr. Tahie. Honorable members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second for Amendment Two.
Chairman, Chairman Motion?
Uh, who's this?
Chairman Kiala Motion?
Okay, Honorable Begay, motions. And Honorable Daniels, second, the motion. Honorable members of RDC, do you have any comments or questions on Amendment Two? Going twice. Going three times, we'll put her to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Begay?
Chairman Kiala, which is green. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart votes green. He just texted in his vote. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, Chair not voting, motion carries, Amendment Two passes. Back to the main motions. Any comments or questions? Going twice. Going three times, we'll go ahead and put her to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Begay?
Chairman Kiala, which is green.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart? Honorable Stewart votes green. His text message.
Green tonight.
Thank you, Shetella. We have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, Chair not voting, motion carries on Legislation Zero One Twenty Six Dash Twenty Two. Thank you, Shetella. Honorable Stewart, as well as Ms. Chermaya, Ms. Holgate, and everybody that participated on this legislation. We're down to G, Legislation Zero One Ten Dash Twenty Two, sponsor Honorable Stewart. Are you still on the call with us? Honorable Stewart?
Chairman, Delegate Stewart is on the call?
Okay, he just texted me he is. So go ahead, Mr. Tahie, could you please read this into the record?
Chair members of RDC, you have summary law legislation sheet for tracking number Zero One One Zero Dash Two Two, date June twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-two, an act relating to the budget finance, resource and development in Navajo Committee Committees and the Navajo Nation Council allocating five million from the Sisasun Fund for the assistance and remediation of the former Navajo Forest Product Industry location in Navajo, New Mexico, approving the related expenditure plan pursuant to twelve NNC Section Two Five Zero One through Section Two Five Zero Eight. Purpose of this legislation, to allocate five million from the Sisasun Fund to the hazardous substances fund for the Navajo EPA to use the environmental assessment and remediation activities cleanup project at the former NFPI located in Red Lake Chapter. Chair members of RDC, Navajo Nation Council has final authority over this legislation, which we read into the record in its entirety. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Wilson C. Stewart Jr. for tracking number Zero One One Zero Dash Two Two, an act relating to the budget finance, resource, and development in Navajo Committee Committees and the Navajo Nation Council allocating five million from the Sisasun Fund from the assessment and remediation of the former Navajo Forest Product Industry located in Navajo, New Mexico, approving the related expenditure plan pursuant to twelve NNC Section Two Five Zero One through Section Two Five Zero Eight. And Section One outlines the authority, and Section Two outlines the the findings, which includes Exhibit A, Exhibit B, Exhibit C, Exhibit D, Exhibit E. And Section Three is allocating finally from the Sisasun Fund for the assessment and remediation of the former Navajo Forest Product Industry located, approving the related expenditure plan pursuant to twelve NNC Section Two Five Zero One through Section Two Five Zero Eight, which also references Exhibit C. Then you have Section Four's effective date, Section Five is a savings clause. Attaches Exhibit A, this is a resolution of Red Lake Chapter Number Eighteen, Resolution Number RLC Dash Zero Seven Dash Two One Dash Three One. You have Exhibit B, the Navajo Nation Forest Product Industry, the history of the known environmental violations. Attaches Exhibit C, the Navajo Environmental Protection Agency Propose Expenditure Plan for the use of Sisasun Fund for the assessment and remediation of the former Navajo Forest Product Industry location. You have Exhibit D, which is the memorandum to Delegate Wilson C. Stewart from Director Belinda Shirley, date June twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-two. The subject is request for funding and approval for the expenditure plan for the five million NFPI cleanup funds. Attached as Exhibit E, is a resolution from the Budget Finance Committee, the Navajo Nation Council, the twenty-fourth, twenty-first Navajo Nation Council, the fourth year of two thousand twenty-one, Resolution Number BFJ Eight Dash Zero Nine Dash Eleven. Then you have the first report, the Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Number Zero One One Zero Dash Two Two, sponsors Honorable Wilson C. Stewart Jr. This legislation was posted on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two at five thirty-nine PM. The five-day comment period ended July fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this legislation, there was no comment opposing this legislation, there was no comment or recommendation on this legislation. Then you have the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council Budget Finance Committee Report, which issued a due pass with a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, which was signed by Chairman Jamie Hennew. The Chair members of RDC, that is Legislation Number Zero One One Zero Dash Two Two read into the record. Back to you Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahie. Honorable members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second. Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Second by.
Daniel.
Honorable Daniels? Thank you. Honorable members of RDC, do you have any comments or questions? I hear none. We'll go ahead and put her to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote? This legislation goes on to the full council.
I vote green. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker. Honorable Begay?
Chairman Kiala, which is green. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart? Honorable Stewart votes green. According to his text message, we have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, Chair not voting, motion carries on Legislation Zero One One Zero Dash Twenty Two. On to H, on the agenda, Legislation Zero One One Four Dash Twenty Two. Honorable Vice Chair Walker is on the call with us. Mr. Tahie, could you read this into the record? This legislation here, RDC has final authority. Mr. Tahie?
Chair members of RDC, you have Legislation Summary Sheet for Tracking Number Zero One One Four Dash Twenty Two, date July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, kind of the resolution relating to, relating to the Resource and Development, approving the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Navajo Nation Housing Planner for the Native American Housing Assistant and Self-Determination Act of nineteen ninety-six, Indian Housing Block Grant Funding. Purpose, this resolution and approve will approve the two thousand twenty-three FY Navajo Nation Housing Planner for the NAHASDA Indian Housing Block Grant Fund. Chair members of RDC, Resource and Development Committee has final authority over this legislation. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Thomas Walker Jr., tracking number Zero One One Four Dash Two Two, in action relating to Resource and Development, approving the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Navajo Nation Housing Plan for the Native American Housing Assistant and Self-Determination Act of nineteen ninety-six, Indian Housing Block Grant Funding. Be enacted, Section One, Authority. The Resource and Development Committee is a standing committee of the Navajo Nation Council, two in NNC Section Five Hundred A. B, the Resource and Development Committee is authorized to grant final approval for the Native American Assistant and Self-Determination Act of nineteen ninety-six, Indian Housing Plan, two in NNC Section Five Oh One B to B. Section Two, Findings. The Navajo Housing Authority has prepared the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Navajo Nation Housing Plan for the NAHASDA Indian Housing Block Grants, which is attached as Exhibit A. The Board of Commissioners of the Housing Authority by Resolution NHA Dash Five One Zero Four Dash Twenty Twenty Two, attached here to as Exhibit B, request the support and endorsement of the Resource and Development Committee of the Navajo Nation Council and request authorization to submit Navajo Nations FY two thousand twenty-three Indian Housing Plans to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development on behalf of the Navajo Nation. Section Three, Approval. The Resource and Development Committee of the Navajo Nation Council hereby approves the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Navajo Nation Housing Plan for the NAHASDA Indian Housing Block Grant Funding here to attach as Exhibit A. B, the Navajo Nation hereby approves the submission of the Navajo Nation Indian Housing Plan by the Navajo Housing Authority on behalf of the Navajo Nation. Attaches Exhibit A, which is the Energy Performance Information Center OMB Control Number Two Five Seven Seven Dash Zero Two One Eight, expiration date zero seven thirty-one, twenty nineteen, grant number five five dash IH dash zero four dash two zero two eight one zero. The report is IHP report for two thousand twenty-three. The name of this recipient is the Navajo Housing Authority. Attaches Exhibit B, which is a resolution from the Board of Commissioners of the Navajo Housing Authority, Resolution Number NHA Dash Five One Zero Four Dash Twenty Twenty Two. Then you have the first report to Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary for Legislation Number Zero One One Four Dash Two Two. This, this this legislation is sponsored by Honorable Thomas Walker Jr. This legislation was posted on July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven AM. The five-day comment period ended July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this legislation, there was no comment opposing this legislation, there was no comment or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of RDC, that is Legislation Number Zero One One Four Dash Two Two, read into the record. Back to you Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tahie. Honorable members of RDC, let's have a motion and a second.
Motion, Daniels?
Honorable Daniels, thank you. Second.
Freeland?
Honorable Freeland, thank you. Honorable members of RDC, do you have any comments or questions? I hear none. We'll go ahead and put her to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Begay?
Chairman Kiala, which is green. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Begay. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. We have a Honorable Stewart just texting his vote as green, so we have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting, motion carries on Legislation Zero One One Four Dash Twenty Two. Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, Committee Member Staff, for considering the legislation and Yeah, we're considering the uh legislation and uh. Uh what they lack, thank you.
Oh, shananda, yeah, shananda. Next, I on the agenda, legislation zero, one, one, five, dash twenty-two. Honorable Elmer Begay, are you on the call with us? Honorable Elmer Begay gone twice. Honorable Elmer Begay gone three times, we're moving down to J. Legislation zero, one, one, seven, dash twenty-two. Honorable Freeland is with us. Mr. Tahi, could you read this into the record? Naukauiki has full final authority on this legislation. Mr. Tahi?
Chair members of the Resource Development Committee, you have legislation summary sheet for tracking number zero, one, one, seven, dash two, two, date July fourteen, two thousand and twenty-two. The title of the resolution relating to the Resource and Development Committee and the Naukauiki Committee. Supporting U S Senate Bill two, two, six, five, the Native American Housing Assistant Self-Determination Act of two thousand twenty-one. Urging the U S Senate to amend the bill to expand the income eligibility requirement to increase Native American housing ownership. Purpose, this resolution is approved will support expansion of the N A H A S D A Senate Bill two, two, six, five. To income and to include low income and over income tribal applicants. Chair members of the Resource and Development Committee, Naukauiki Committee has final authority over this legislation, will be read into the record in its entirety. The primary sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Mark A Freeland, tracking number zero, one, one, seven, dash two, two. An action relating to the Resource and Development Committee and the Naukauiki Committee, supporting U S Senate Bill two, two, six, five. The Native American Housing Assistant and Self-Determination Act of two thousand twenty-one. Urging the U S Senate to amend the bill to expand income eligibility requirement to increase Native American home ownership. It includes the being acted the whereas, which includes an exhibit A, which is Senate Bill two, two, six, five, in part. And also includes exhibit B and exhibit C and the and has a there now therefore it be resolved. Attaches exhibit A, which is Senate Bill two, two, six, four, of the one hundred and seventeenth Congress of First Session. Regarding the reauthorization of the American Housing Assistance and Self-Determination Act of nineteen ninety-six. Attached is exhibit B, which is a resolution in A B I S dash four, eight, dash nineteen, a resolution Naukauiki Standing Committee, the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council, first year of twenty nineteen. Attaches exhibit C. Which is the communication from Executive Director, Chief Financial Officer Maureen G Curly to Honorable Mark A Freeland. This communication was made via email on Tuesday, April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two at three fifty-one P M Mountain Daylight Time. And attached is the first report. The Navajo Nation Legislative Branch Internet Public Review Summary, Legislation Number zero, one, one, seven, dash two, two, sponsors Honorable Mark A Freeland. This legislation was posted on July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two at five twenty-one P M, the five-day comment period ended July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. There was no comment supporting this legislation, there was no comments opposing this legislation, there was no comments or recommendation on this legislation. Chair members of R D C, that is legislation, tracking number zero, one, one, seven, dash two, two, read into the record. Back to you Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahi. Honorable members of R D C, let's have a motion and a second.
Chairman, I motion.
Thank you, Honorable Vice Chair Walker, second by.
Thank you, Daniel.
Honorable Daniels, thank you. Out of R D C, shananda, it goes on to Naukauiki Committee as well. Any comments or questions? I hear none, we'll go ahead and put her to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
Chairman, I vote green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Begay?
Chairman Kealan looks green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Daniels?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Freeland?
Green.
Thank you. Honorable Stewart texting his vote as green, we have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed. Chair not voting, motion carries for legislation zero, one, one, seven, dash twenty-two. Thank you, shananda. Um, just uh for your information, shananda. Honorable Paul Begay has been on the call with us. It's this morning. Honorable Begay, could you introduce yourself, sir? He may have gotten off the call, but he was on the call this morning. He had texted me a little later this morning that letting me know. Number eight, close of meeting, Mr. Tahi, any announcements for us?
The chair members of R D C, just a reminder that we have our leadership meeting out at Wolf Springs Ranch. Which is scheduled for August fifth and Saturday, August sixth, with the travel date starting tomorrow and the return travel date on August seventh. A reminder that the leadership meeting with the Water Rights Commission, the Water Rights Unit and Water Management Branch for six, seventh, and eighth has been canceled. We will have our regular R D C meeting on August tenth. At ten A M via Zoom, and chair members of R D C, that is my announcements. Back to you Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tahi. Honorable members of R D C, do you have any announcements? At thenya, Hakushila, we're adjournment, shananda, motion to adjourn.
Kealan.
Honorable Kealan Begay Junior, motion, second by.
Vice Chair Walker.
Honorable Vice Chair Walker, here, shananda. We'll go ahead and put it to a vote. Honorable Vice Chair Walker, how do you vote?
I vote green, thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Begay?
Chairman Kealan looks green, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Begay. Honorable Daniels? Honorable Daniels? Honorable Freeland?
Vote green.
Thank you, Honorable Freeland. Honorable Stewart just texted his vote as green. Honorable Daniels?
I vote green.
Thank you. In the physical, Linda, not in, nah. She has none, uh, we have a vote of five in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, motion carries. We are officially adjourned at two thirty P M, Sabo Trifly, Sabo. Travel safely, yeah, let this, uh, to Wolf Springs Ranch, what a beautiful country that is over there, R D C. Wolf Sea over there, we're officially adjourned. God bless each and every one of you. Thank you, shananda, for all that you do. Your public service to the great Navajo Nation, thank you, Mr. Tahi, Ms. Khan, O M B. And all the staff, Navajo Nation employees on the call with us and everyone. Thank you, Hakona, God bless each and every one of you.